Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Group call agenda.
Danny Chamonis here. Scott Secquinton.
Here.
Alan Husky.
Here.
Starla Leclerc.
Here.
Mark Svetner.
Here.
Shaden Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Tim Peach.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, onto number four, presentation and report from the ad hoc aquatics committee. Discussion of possible city rule and capital funding in operational community pool. Uh, the recommended action would be identify any additional information desired by the city council in order to consider action on this matter at a regular meeting. All right, Mike Colliers?
Yeah, hello everyone. Uh, welcome to Parks and Rec at the, uh, work session. So I had a pleasure with working with a really great group of individuals that volunteered to be on our ad hoc, committee for the pool research. And so we will summarize our findings, uh, based on all the things we were asked to do through this. Quick agenda, go through, yeah, introduction, kind of proposal, deliverables, solutions, and, um, budgets and some community benefits as well. So, uh, good group, a great group of volunteers. I was, I'm a little bit daunted at the beginning about the amount of research we're gonna have to do, but this group made it, uh, easy, uh, in the long run for us to get it all together. Um, so there they are, I'm not gonna read them all off, but you do have quite a few of them back there. So thank you everybody who came and, uh, helped out to make this happen. All right, so when we all were here for our regular city council meeting and we'd heard from members of the Two Rivers, Family Swim Center, there was kind of a, I don't know, maybe I'd say an informal kind of proposal, right? Put out there about how, uh, a pool could take shape if it was community operated, a city operated pool. So I think we all know at this point that the Two Rivers Family Swim Center is looking to basically, uh, close and cease to exist essentially as an organization. Um, so what's put out by other supporters of having a pool in the town was that, well, if the current swim club property is identified for a, uh, as an ideal site, would the city of Two Rivers possibly purchase that site to operate our, uh, our own city pool there? Uh, that would also entail a new 501(c)(3) organization that could be the friends of the pool. Uh, that would be from dedicated community volunteers. So probably some of those same kind of individuals that have been a part of the swim club, but not necess- not necessarily. Uh, that, individuals from kind of around those circles were saying, well, if that's what it takes, then the friends of the pool would raise the capital funding needed to build an entirely new facility, including building a pool location to be determined, whether or not it's cost effective to go back to the old site or find a new site. Um, and through all the research and just talking with the community swim club, it is definitely a situation where there would need to be an entirely new facility. It's no real option for reusing the current, uh, site, the current facilities, the site, yes, possibly. Uh, and just the how this would all operate was the city of Two Rivers would own the property and the facility with Parks and Rec department leading the operations. Like any community pool of the city, the facility would be open to the public with daily and seasonal passes, available for a reasonable fee. And then revenue from passes, concessions, programs, rentals would fund, based on the research, would fund fifty to sixty percent to be kind of in line with what other organizations are, are doing. But that would be up for discussion, I guess, but based on other communities skipping ahead, uh, they would be around that. City tax support would then likely have to fund the remaining balance of operations. We'll get into that further, of course. And then future capital expenditures, this one was left up in the air a little bit, but I'm just doing the research in terms of what other communities are doing. Cities are finding ways to do the big capital improvements. And of course, the Friends group would be of an asset to being able to raise money to make those things happen. So that was kind of the, kind of status quo of what was thrown out of the table in the city council. Um, for reference to kind of what all that means in terms of scale and actually what it would look like, is picture on the left is the aerial of the current swim club. The picture on the right is a kind of perspective plan that a company put together for the Two Rivers Family Swim Club when they were looking at doing updates on their own. And so really, the grand scheme of things, the footprint of the pool changes very little, uh, in this scenario. Now, we'll see later, more research would be beneficial to say, is that pool the right scale for our community? Uh, with some professional feasibility studies, but in terms of, you know, we're not, not we're, but the, the groups kind of proposing this thing, uh, aren't saying we should have a, for a Manitowoc style, kind of outdoor water park style thing. So this, this layout really is, you can see the two major pools on the aerial would connect those two pools, make them more manageable with one filtration system and all those types of things. So that was what was proposed to the swim club when they had been looking into updating this. All right, um, but back to the statement of purpose. So this is where, that's kind of some of the background was put out by the audit of all of us. And then where we went from there, uh, we obviously formed the, the ad hoc committee to gather the facts and research about the creation of the community swim, uh, center funded by the 501(c)(3) and operated by the city. And then we have a, a number of deliverables that we needed to make sure we researched. And that committee could help me do that research and make sure we fulfill those to go back to that. And then provide some recommendations, which we'll get there again. Please stop me if I'm going too fast if you have any questions. So, um, here are those seven deliverables. We'll go, uh, through them one by one. I'm not gonna read them all off this slide because you'll, you'll get them as we go. And you should have a copy of that in your package if you want to reference this. All right, so our first task was to evaluate alternate locations. So this year, there is no community swim club. So what are other people doing? Is that all, could that be a long-term opportunity that people just, you know, go other places, find alternate locate, alternative locations? Uh, of course, Manitowoc Family Aquatic Center is, you know, the, the big facility that's, uh, close to us. It is an outdoor facility. It has a large capacity. Um, feedback from not necessarily the Manitowoc staff, but from people who attend the, uh, the family aquatic center there is that it can get crowded and it can be difficult to watch young children in that facility because it's big. It's got slides. It's got a number of different kind of accesses where you can get into the pools. So definitely a little bit more difficult, especially more difficult than the current kind of facility that was in Two Rivers. That is a seventeen minute drive from the swim center site. That's what Google Maps will tell you. It takes seventeen minutes to get there from the swim center here in Two Rivers. So not walkable and not bikeable. Warm water, I, I, that says unknown. I would assume that they have, uh, heated water. Uh, but there's, there's different layers of, uh, of heated water that we learned with the pool, uh, the high school and that, yes, the water's heated, but it's kept at a low temperature. So, um, like we don't know necessarily what temperature they're keeping the pool at. Cost of use fairly affordable for Manitowoc's facility at six dollars a day, a fifty dollar season pass. There's some, a bunch of caveats to that and how it all adds up for a family, but the, the core number there is six dollars a day. That they really wanted to simplify their rates is what, uh, they told us was they wanted to keep those rates simple. So Mary Dawson up with me on a couple of these visits. We got to, um, chat with staff, uh, at the Aquatic Center and YMCA. Uh, shallow end, other pool amenities like the mini golf. Uh, and then when I proposed, well, what would it look like if we had more of a meaningful partnership with the Aquatic Center, their Parks and Rec director said, yeah, we could, you know, if there was people coming from Two Rivers and you, the city or the city of Two Rivers wanted to subsidize those costs somehow, that they would be open to working that out. So they're not reducing their rates for us, but they would be willing, there would be some legwork on their end of just figuring out, okay, uh, how many people from Two Rivers under the subsidized program are coming? And so I just threw that out, that idea out to them. Uh, and they said, yeah, that they would work with us on something like that. The next one was the YMCA. Uh, it is not an outdoor facility. It's the, the facility, uh, inside. It is a large capacity. Um, in terms of availability, it's got fairly limited hours because they are very, uh, very limited by lifeguard hours and just the amount of people are going into the pool to make it worth it. Uh, that facility is thirteen minutes from the current swim club, obviously not walkable or bikeable. The rates, you can do day passes at the YMCA and all their various family and packages and things like that. They were willing on a partnership side to take it a little bit further. So I, when I went there, we sat down with the executive director. I said, well, would you be willing to explore, you know, a special discounted day rate if people are just going into the pool? Or maybe we could open up times, uh, for the pool where we open up additional times and there's this different fee. And they, they were open to all of those options, which I was kind of surprised about because YMCA has a very set, um, you know, amount of hours and rates and things like that. So they were a little bit more willing to be flexible in terms of, okay, well, you're just gonna use the pool maybe for this amount of time. It could be a lower rate, which was good. Then Two Rivers High School, of course. Uh, yeah, not outdoor facility, uh, large capacity. Yeah, it, it depends how you cut it, I suppose. Uh, then availability, very limited during the school year. So we have, we struggle as the Parks Direct Department to get swim lessons in during the school year because the swim teams take up a lot of time. Um, and but during the summer, there's quite a bit of availability. They, we were a part, we are currently a part of summer school leading lessons as a, the summer school schedule. Um, and then if we would have been able to find some more staffing, we probably would have opened up the afternoon with open swim with Parks and Rec during the summer, but we could not find an aquatic coordinator to help us open that up. Of course, uh, a much shorter drive, six minutes from the swim club. Uh, we put walkable and bikeable because the Raider Trail is there. Now it just depends, I guess it depends where you're at to get to the swim club. Is it walkable or bikeable? Where, where it currently is, uh, technically there is a trail going out to the high school. Uh, cost of use, a high school would not be, the school district would not be charging us. Now, if Parks and Rec was gonna do it, we probably would have put a small fee trying to cover lifeguard costs and things like that, but we could have made it fairly affordable. Depth of the shallow end is a little deeper. It's five feet there. Really no other family amenities, uh, within the pool area. And then of course, the school's been very open to partnering with us. They're not charging us and they're willing to provide a janitor at no cost to open and close the building during the summer so we could have that additional access. So that's a summary on all the, all the locations. Any other question?
Yeah, Doug? Can you quantify large capacity or is it not hard? I mean, is there a number?
I don't necessarily have a qua- uh, uh, a way to quantify it, no.
Okay.
The, the biggest facility here by far would be the aquatic, the Family Aquatic Center. They told me, I'm blanking on this, but it was pushing six hundred people was their limit for that.
Mike, do you have to be a resident of Manitowoc using the Family Aquatic Center?
No, no, you could just still go pay a day pass. They actually switched that. This year, again, they wanted to keep their rates very simple. They used to have a resident and non-resident fee. They got rid of that this year. They said, one, we don't wanna pick and choose. Like, we don't have to figure out.
Do we have any idea about the capacity is right now at the Family Swim Center?
I do not know the answer to that one. The current Family Swim Center, no, I do not. Anything else on these? Good. Uh, major takeaways, uh, just reviewing all this with the committee, kind of the summary was of all the locations, provide some short-term and limited coverage for swimming activities. Individual family situations will determine the best location. Um, cost, distance, availability, availability of times, but no facility really offers a full range of services, amenities, the convenience of the Family Swim Center. So adding that it's kind of fun to be outside of the, uh, outside pool. Uh, when it was operating, there was a little water slide at the, uh, Community Swim Club. Um, there was a toddler swim area at this Community Swim Club that was very shallow, uh, gathering places, picnic, uh, picnicking type facilities. And so, yeah, no, not quite, nothing's quite the same, I guess is the takeaway. All right, funding models. So this was a lot of research, uh, and we called around to a lot of cities. I Google searched a lot of cities and pulled up their budget summaries and looked at what they're spending on pools because the main takeaway we wanted to get from this was that revenue and tax support columns. The, the things on the side were really hard to find because some of these pools were old. Like, we couldn't quite understand when it was built or how much it cost to build it. And all, for the vast majority of these, these pools are all older, so those construction capital cost numbers are very outdated. They're pre-COVID. So, uh, we're in an entirely different world, basically, at this point. The ones that were most pertinent to us were these revenue and tax supported ones. So these are bigger cities. So of course Manitowoc is the, uh, you know, the neighbor. Uh, I would call, I kind of made this choice of titling it with the description of a large outdoor water park. When I look at Manitowoc with big slides and all the amenities they have, a big splash pad, I call that large outdoor water park. So that would not be apples to apples to what a small outdoor pool would be that we would do in Two Rivers. Bill, did you have a question?
No, I was.
Oh, okay.
I was just, can I ask on the last slide when you were comparing the, what we had?
Yep. Here.
And you were complaining about, or, uh, one thing is this is difficult to watch children, but they, they have lifeguards on them at all times, right?
They do at the Aquatic Center and YMCA, they do. Um, compared to the Community Swim Club in Two Rivers, it is very easy to keep an eye on your children at the Community Swim Club in Two Rivers. The swim club, uh, the Aquatic Center in Manitowoc is just a lot more people and a lot more kind of blind spots. Now, they staff out a lot of lifeguards, so they're gonna tell you it's safe, of course. But in terms of, maybe a parent has a different standard of safety, I guess, than what the, the city would have.
That's what I was thinking. I think that's more geared toward the parent.
Yeah.
For the parent to keep track of their kids as they navigate from maybe the other slides of the Lake River to the kids' area. Not necessarily from the lifeguard.
Yeah. For example, the Two Rivers Community, the, the Two Rivers Swim Club has a separate fenced, like toddler area that's only foot, foot and a half deep. Uh, and so that was super easy for parents to kind of sit in that area. Okay, back to funding models. Uh, yeah, really the, the major outlier on here is Manitowoc. Uh, Port Washington, Grafton, Little Shute, and Port Atkinson really kind of in the ballpark of Two Rivers population numbers. Uh, these numbers were, we need to tuck the track down, so, um, I hope they are as accurate as we can find them. Most of them were pulled out of budget reports from cities where we talked right to their staff. The major takeaway on those was you need to be working hard to make your pool operate as well as it can. You, between fees and memberships, uh, programs, swim lessons, many of them said, oh, you definitely wanna have a swim team because that swim team is gonna dry usership at that pool. Or, uh, be creative, bring in CrossFit, uh, tournaments or something where they would swim as a part of their, their tournaments. Uh, and then every single one of these, I think, has a concession stand. It's almost a given that they're gonna have a concession stand or they have some sort of perhaps rental units, uh, spaces that you could rent out for parks. You'll see in the summary slide, most of these are right around like a, maybe a sixty forty, uh, sixty percent funded by revenue and forty percent funded by tax, uh, a levy of some sort. So these are the numbers for the bigger communities. I don't know why Little Shute's numbers are upside down. Again, what we've been getting told is you do have to work hard to make that revenue, um, for sure. And the other thing that could be tucked into those, uh, tax support numbers, there could be capital funds tucked into those that we couldn't parse out from the budget data. But for the most part, I think those are true numbers for what, um, the tax support is, uh, to those. Here's some of the smaller communities. Uh, New Richmond, I couldn't find data because they never got back to me. Their 501(c)(3) indoor water park, so they really function more like a YMCA. Um, then Reedsburg, uh, right around the size of Two Rivers, and then we get into some smaller communities with Plymouth, New London, and New Holstein. Again, New London never got back to me, but they are again a different model. So they're an indoor fitness center and pool, uh, more like a, a community center with a pool. So those numbers, yeah, start to be very close to what you'll see in future slides of us projecting what we thought operations for Two Rivers. Any questions? We had, oh, this, this was slightly not updated. I did get a Plymouth number for the tax support. And they were, they were, I forget what it was. Maybe it wasn't in the handout. Was that what the updated one was?
There's sixty seven thousand with cap.
With capital. So they told me on the phone that Plymouth's, uh, tax support was a hundred and sixty seven thousand, but they included some capital improvements in that cost for 2023. Now, she did say to me, uh, Department of Public Works Director, she said, there are some bigger capital expenses coming for that pool, but there were some smaller capital expenses included in that annual offering. So theirs was flipped between higher tax support versus revenue, but again, they were including some capital improvements. So major findings on that deliverable was seems like the most, uh, consistent funding model is sixty percent revenue and forty percent tax, uh, funded. Uh, maybe in some communities, it's going towards more of a fifty fifty split. Uh, cost of the initial funding and anything we had is very much out of date. Um, because a lot of these communities haven't built a, a pool in a long time. Because a lot of these communities haven't built a pool in a long time. Later on, we'll see a guest, a guest from one of the, uh, architecture gave us on what a new pool that they just designed would be. Then Manitowoc has a significantly different operational model, it's a large water park versus a community swim center. So they have, um, they have putt-putts, they have a splash pad, they've got some other really nice amenities that would be very different than what we would do in Two Rivers. Okay, deliverable three was basically assess, kind of give feedback on programs and services. There's really a general, you know, general things, most community pools are doing about the same thing in the programming areas. But again, we were told several times is that you've gotta work hard for these things, you gotta put the effort in if you're gonna put up your end of the bargain in terms of revenue. Yeah, so swim sessions, classes, locker room access, swim team, swim up movies, concessions, brand paid lessons and certifications. Lots of options here in terms of what your imagination can come up with, there's lots of good things we could do at a pool, basically. Lots of, many of them were telling us about opportunities for seniors, water yoga, um, Pilates, all different types of stuff like that. And of course, youth, uh, swim lessons and things, and then birthday parties, youth swim team, other bigger things that kind of bring in a chunk of revenue as well. But at this point, we don't have anywhere in our community that would give us, you know, all of these things. Parks and Rec could do some of these at the high school pool, in the time that's available to us during the summer, possibly. But, you know, putting it all together in one spot, probably unlikely. All right, findings on that, programs and services offered at other municipalities, consistent with what the Family Swim Center was already providing. Probably some opportunity, definitely some opportunity for growth there, uh, over what was going on before. Successful community pools are more creative and aggressive with offering additional revenue generating programming. If the facility had an indoor component, there's an opportunity to utilize the facility off-season to optimize usage and drive revenue. One of the ideas that was floating around is, well, what if there's a little fitness center similar to the community house? That would be built onto that, that building for the swim club, and that could be open year-round. Maybe you scan in like a, a 24-hour fitness center or something like that. And that way, you know, people from the community could be using the facility year-round, you're taking advantage of an opportunity that you weren't using before to bring in some revenue to support the facility. Any other questions on that? Good. All right, location evaluation. I'll give a big caveat to this, that we are not the experts in evaluating sites for pools, but we did our best job in kind of considering what's around town. Taking a look at some vacant properties, opportunities, and putting a little bit of logic to it, but you'll see at the end, one of our recommendations is, we really need a professional company that does feasibility studies, that does this type of work, that really helped us out here. Obviously, the existing site is the most, you know, of interest location. It is on the perhaps small side compared to some other community pools, uh, but it's familiar. It's got a hole in the ground right now, it's not probably looking super great, and so taking care of that issue would be nice. Really the kind of lack of parking, if, I think, lack of parking, if attendance continued to grow at the facility. Former Hanson Flores property, so right there next to the Dollar Store. This one is a little bit bigger facility, off a main road. In terms of economic developments, it seems like the feedback would be, we'd go kind of a different direction in, on that area. But probably close to utilities, a bigger site, vacant lot, so it could be an opportunity. Northside Cemetery, we've discussed for years that we really need another north end park. And there's a lot of extra property yet, the cemetery is already city-owned. Doesn't have any of the infrastructure in there, but a lot of ways, it could, um, it could serve the, serve the purpose that we need. Other ideas thrown out were the Shota Riverside, those were kind of excluded for just kind of weather and water table issues that we were considering. There's an empty lot north of Lonze's, which is quite small, so probably not an, uh, an ideal opportunity. The McGee football field, uh, next to McGee Elementary is city property. We use that heavily for youth recreation, uh, for flag football, soccer, lots of other stuff. But it is a fairly sizable field, and it's right next to where the swim club currently is. And then the old Hamilton property did get put on here as well, probably not our ideal development route there, but it is a big one. Okay, so that's a location, we're good with that one? Yep. All right, scope and estimates. Newman Pools gave that image I showed at the very beginning to the community swim club. Now, Newman wouldn't work directly with me, because I'm the city, so I would have to go off the bid, uh, to actually, you know, work with them. And so they have no guarantee that I'm gonna actually spend any money with them, they'd just be throwing those numbers. But they did direct me to Water Technology Inc. And so Water Technology Inc. gave us some good numbers, uh, here on estimates of their services. Burbatch Inc., it's another pool construction facilitating company, really, uh, they gave us some estimates. And then Architecture, the firm that designed Central Park, also has been working in this realm. So we at least pulled three opportunities here to compare what others are, uh, what some of these organizations are doing. Burbatch was, that's their, what they do, right? They help feasibility studies, they'll help you with developing fundraising goals, referendum support. They were full service. Now, I was quite surprised by the percentages of what they put in here, 7.45 the construction cost, that's what they put in their document. If we ever wanted to go down that road, we need to clarify those costs, because that would be a very large sum of money. But they did cite us some other packages for, you know, what's a technical evaluation of the existing site? What developing a new construction program would go out and evaluate other existing sites around the city, see what would work best. Water Technology gave us something similar, feasibility services, they gave us a range of 20,000 to 25,000. Pro forma budget, concept designs, architectural plans, so their total was, you know, 42 to 47,000. But they did not quote pool construction costs at the time. Newman did come back through Water Technology and say that a new, taking the plans, the old plans that were provided with the pool, updating through, uh, today, and adding a building in, they were guessing in a range of six to seven million dollars for a full new construction of a pool and a bathhouse, the whole facility. Architecture gave us a similar number as well, so Architecture doesn't really do any of the feasibility business. They're an architectural, architecture company, right? So they are saying, okay, we'll evaluate the site, develop design and architectural plans, start securing estimates from contractors, and they told us, you know, ballpark $20,000 services. They recently completed a pool design in Janesville with an estimated cost of 5 million. This pool's smaller than what's designed for Two Rivers, based on that photo I showed you at the beginning. And so Blake, who we have a good relationship with because we worked with, he said, you better start to think closer to 6 million for a pool, if that the one in Janesville was 5 million. And so that number, that six to seven million starts to really start to restart to kind of call less around that number when you're thinking about a pool and a building as well. So nobody was really willing to throw us, like, more firm numbers than that, because waiting the sites, all those things, we gotta pay. Any questions about those?
I guess I don't, I don't understand that different, different companies can be fit, but you have, what are the different topics within? Like, you've got techno, CSE evaluations of new construction fundraisers, referendums, and other companies don't have any of that. Is that, is that additional cost that things you don't?
Or they don't do it. If it's not on there, they don't do it.
Are the things that the first company listed necessary, required in this process?
Not necessarily required, no. What we're basically, we definitely would need to do is a technical evaluation of the existing facility, can it be repurposed? Can we just use the whole, uh, you know, what would it take to actually rebuild a pool on that site? What are some of the different characteristics of the community? Would, uh, the new pool that we showed at the beginning actually fit the size of our community? So it's likely that people didn't always go to the community swim club, because it was falling behind a little bit. If you had a brand-new pool, you'd probably attract potentially a lot more people to that facility. So are we gonna have way more demand than we can handle with a smaller pool? We, we just don't know, because we don't, we, we're not the people to go out and do the feasibility study to guess on how many are gonna attend. So yes, these are different, and that's because each, each company gave me a different thing from what they would do. And so they are all, all very unique in what they are offering up to us.
Mike, and this is picking one site and saying, you know, do your feasibility on that site, not, you know, pitting two sites against each other?
Yeah, and, and Burbatch developed new construction program, site evaluations, other site evaluations were included in that one. Feasibility services from Water Technology, other site assessments were in the feasibility services, and then Architecture just would not do that. Unless, unless we told them, go to that site, evaluate that site through this. But they would probably just start with, you know, they wouldn't do a comprehensive understanding of all the different sites. In my opinion, what I liked was Water Technology, they seemed very professional, they had a lot of really good pool examples of the communities they've worked with. That's the one that worked with Manitowoc when they did theirs, so they've done some big, pretty big facilities. Burbatch was a little bit all over the place, you can kind of tell by the numbers. And then Architecture is not quite their, their lane. I think they'd probably design us a fabulous pool, but are we gonna get the additional services and feasibility pieces? Probably not with Architecture, still needed, probably do that elsewhere. All right, so based on all that research, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, going backwards. Looking at these numbers of revenue, tax supports, uh, looking at budgets from other pools, we put together a kind of a draft budget of what it would take to operate a community pool. And this was based off, a lot of based off of what the current community pool was doing as well. There's a lot here, but in summary, this was showing, you know, increasing, some increasing expenses over time, over the first five years, with total expenditures across the lot, roughly 222,000 in that first year. Wages, of course, are the, the largest portion of that. The next slide is probably more important to that story, and that the revenue breakdown. So aquatic fees, uh, 80, mid-80,000s to 90,000s in terms of how many, how much fees you bring in, memberships and daily passes. And that is right spot on with the research that we did, that's about what communities are bringing in. On, on smaller pools as well. Concessions revenues, um, for reference, the Shota Beach concession stand last year was right around $40,000 gross revenue. So that's not net, that's gross. So you'd have to do, you know, you'd have to be working hard in your concession stand, but many of the communities we talked to were right in this ballpark of making over $30,000 off their concession stands. Then programs, we, yeah, kind of escalated that across the year, construction programs, special events, rentals, those types of things. So the, that's all the top table breaking down, what all the revenue would be. Our expenditures from this slide go over to the total expenditures. Minus your total revenue, this, this is the deficit, so this is what city subsidy would have to support.
Mike, what did you anticipate? Did you take a look at reinvesting for future repairs and future cars?
Yeah, we did not calculate capital into these, because capital costs can be highly variable, right? So Manitowoc was telling us, very different pool, very different pool, very, they, much bigger pool. Telling us, we need a $100,000 pool lining in the next couple of years in Manitowoc's facility. And so those capital costs are highly variable. Most, most cities were not putting that into their annual operating budgets. They had to come up with it along the way to put in the big capital costs, because those, those will come. Now, they've told us over and over again, every community says, you need to keep up on your maintenance. Have a certified pool operator, keep up on your maintenance, and you will extend the longevity of the facility and all its models, basically. A lot of communities, Manitowoc included, are getting a current staff member certified as a pool operator. So Manitowoc has, their Parks and Rec and DPW are basically together, and they have a, a full-time staff person that works everywhere else, and, but he's also the certified pool operator, so he goes off and supports the pool operations, checks chemicals, and then goes out and does his own thing. If there's something technical to be repaired, he's the one getting called in. Now, what we did for this is, in terms of capacity, and any type, we have zero type of expertise in this at Parks and Rec currently, is we budgeted a full-time position that would be that certified pool operator. That position could possibly have some overlap in programming and facility operations. We would have to be creative about what the person does in the off-season. Maybe that's helping with fundraising, other types of things, but this budget is, is inclusive of a full-time position. And that, we felt was important, because who's gonna carry on, carry on this? Who's gonna have that pool certification? Who's gonna be there at a reoccurring basis, instead of trying to do this with a part-time seasonal person that's just gonna continue to turn over? Do you have questions?
So it's taking up, what, 60,000 dollars?
Yeah, I actually have the, sorry, we're skipping ahead. This was at the end, in the, uh, kind of supplemental materials, we have 55,000 for wages on a full-time pool manager. Total, total package for that was just under 90,000, so the vast majority of it would be that full-time position. Seasonal assistant manager, most pools were doing some sort of seasonal aquatic coordinator, programming coordinator. That's what we wanted to hire this year for the pool, uh, for the high school pool. We came in a little late to the game, and we weren't able to get somebody for that. We've got some lifeguards, some high school lifeguards waiting in the wings, that I think would be good options for us in the future. So I think that position's fillable. The lifeguards, you'd need 13 of them for our, for the scale of facility we'd probably be dealing with. A lot of people are gonna say there's a lifeguard shortage, and there definitely is, but the community swim club has repeatedly told us that they never had an issue fielding lifeguards. They always staffed up on lifeguards. Now, Manitowoc is different. Manitowoc needs like 33 people on deck, not all certified lifeguards, but they have people just telling you, you can go down this slide. Or their pool has a lot of blind spots, they need lifeguards in different positions. Having a pool like we showed at the beginning would kind of minimize the number of people that you need to have on deck. Groundskeeper, factored in some cost for bats, but that would be, that, the groundskeeping on this facility would be really minimal. Our current Parks and Rec crew would absorb that. Janitorial, we put that in, this would, uh, there probably would be extra staff time from Parks and Rec doing those types of things. But then lifeguards would be rotating out concession stand instead of being on deck, and they could be doing some of those things as well. But that's kind of the summary of the stuff in these.
Mike, I guess what I'm asking you is, personnel may help delay some of the material costs of resurfacing in pools, new pumps and material costs, there's gotta be some way to save for that future cost, and you gotta take it out of the revenue line, you already anticipated, otherwise it becomes a huge capital hit.
Right. Thing is, you're losing money.
Making any money.
You're not making any money, so, uh, that's why you'd come along with a friends group, right? Is your friends group, you'd have to lean on your friends group to be continuously fundraising. We didn't really take that into account in this operations budget, that, that friends group could be, you know, helping with those. We didn't take into consideration advertising and sponsorships, so perhaps these revenue numbers are low. But there would have to be some other efforts to take place to raise the capital.
Is there any history that they have a reliable path? Is there any history that they have a reliable past? What other communities follow with that?
The vast majority of them are, so one told me, uh, who was it? It was... It was Clement. So she told me, they took their capital investments. Is Clement the one that's missing at a hundred and sixty-seven on the tax, uh, support? She told me on the phone, they took it out of reserves this year. She said, we rarely do borrowing. Uh, we are anticipating some, uh, bigger, uh, purchases coming up for the pool, but they took it all out of their cash reserves, is how they paid for it.
Cash reserves, so they're just a pool operation?
She just said to the city.
The pool manager's a year-round position, right?
Yeah.
How long is the outdoor pool season? What's the history of the family swim center?
Yeah, Memorial Day to the Labor Day, right? Yep, so once you get farther into August, you start to lose lifeguards and things like that. Uh, but yeah, it's usually that, that three, those three, four months, right?
So you have other duties that that person would do?
Yeah, so they would have to be working properly, maybe with the schools, right? Work and run in some things there, helping out with other programming. We'd have to find something for them to do, yes. Whether that's kayaking programs or, I don't know, whatever it may be. But that, I think that'd be the only way it does to really get the capacity to do it is...
We're, we're spent on passing time.
You had mentioned that, um, the current Parks and Rec would be responsible for maintaining some of that. Do we have enough staff for that, or would we have to look at adding a position?
Yeah, the, um, where did I have that? No, I don't think so. I, I think in terms of landscaping, I did budget some costs in there for landscaping, but our crews would, we could make easy work for the grounds, uh, groundskeeping piece. I don't think that'd be a problem, um, in terms of needing to add additional people. But I did account for the cost. Uh, and same goes for janitorial, while we accounted for the cost. Um, but again, I don't think with a drastic increase of staffing. Maybe that's a seasonal employee that just comes out in the summer and helps or something, or a teenager or something.
So that was, that's a plump week season.
Yes.
So those are for you?
Yeah, yep. And the groundskeeping, I mentioned it four hours a week. So what's it take for us to go low, trim, edge, you know, whatever it may be? With our cemetery crew probably going to do that, who's right next door? I doubt it'd be pretty manageable for us. Alright, any other questions, uh, pro forma, on budget estimates? We felt like this was very strong based on all of our research. Again, we're not professionals who do this. And we are not the company that designed a very specific pool with a certain type of filter, right? That would do something, you know, cost this versus that, right? So, uh, we were kind of taking a good aggregate. Christine Thaler, uh, who helped with this, she is the business manager for Mishkot Public Schools. So she was very good at this for us, uh, to help us figure this out. So I think these were pretty good, uh, estimates of where we would be going. And then we have a nice quote that the committee asked me to put in, but gathering people is one thing, community. Getting them involved is another contribution. Growing them to transform change is the most important. I think if I could speak for the committee, there was a lot of enthusiasm and support for what the pool could do for the community, what it would mean for families, um, the benefit to people. And I think we would all definitely hope and can imagine that if it was an upgrade over the current facility, we could see some pretty tremendous use out of that. Uh, but all that is for you guys to weigh, uh, to figure out if that's right.
Did you miss a slide page?
Oh, so, uh, this is not the most recent, uh, presentation, so you have the most recent presentation. Um, but yeah, household impact bill, can I just steal it right here? So I, Greg helped me figure out the impact on taxes. Household impact, page twenty, should look like this. Greg might have to help me explain it. Uh, but assuming a tax subsidy a hundred thousand dollars, which is slightly over what we were estimating, uh, just kind of, just round up a little bit. Uh, that would be about, what did we say? Twenty-four dollars, uh, per year annually on a property tax bill, that's typically three thousand six hundred and forty. So Greg, help me with the...
Sorry, we're in the middle of this lovely review down here, but if you had a house with a two-hundred-thousand-dollar market value, which assesses it about one-twenty-six, it would add in around, that's twenty-five dollars to your property tax bill.
And that's if the operating, that's just annual operating, right? Saying that'd be a hundred thousand dollar subsidy, we estimated a little bit less than that, but yeah, we gotta kind of count the capital someday. Um, so that at least gives you some sort of estimated ballpark for what, what it would be for...
Scale it up, scale it down if your house has market value. We're assessing it right from two figures. Of three hundred thousand, it's one and a half. And I looked at this and said to Mike, a cop, to make it easy figure, call it a hundred thousand years of tax subsidy. Because I think it's a little higher than what it's...
And we were estimating too that we, the pool would be increasing the revenue as it got, you know, got, it got its feet under it and was doing a little bit better and operating more efficiently, and all those good things. So, uh, yeah, maybe it does operate more efficiently and costs continue to go down and the pool contributes more, or it stays steady and it's, it's for another, another day.
And if you're doing that, maybe you actually fund a sinking fund, which is not characteristic of Tuwok and how government does things. We do it for some things like filter cartridges that we're out of, water filtration plant, where we set aside about a hundred twenty thousand here to replace them. Would certainly be desirable here. Mike, anything you have a question?
This is just for the operating expenses, correct?
This is just for operating.
So what would be for building?
For building, it's a total cost of six to seven million. But that has been proposed that a Friends of the Swim Club would raise all that money. It would not be city fund. That's the proposal that was put on the table. Yes.
And then I, I ran it later after this was built, then you want the city to take over any capital projects. Am I correct?
Well, that's the typical model, right? And so that, that part of the proposal wasn't really solidified, right? So that's what, uh, would have to be worked out with the Friends group. Is how, how much capital could the, the Friends group continue to fundraise over the years after initial fundraise, right? So at the end of the day, the city's gonna own that property. The city's gonna operate. So we have a decision to make. Do we say, no, you have to, you have to contribute Friends somehow? Uh, I guess there's that to it, right?
I think they're reading, uh, I can't find it right now, but there's, uh, one figure where it was three-point-two-million-dollar referendum. For the initial costs, there, that's... So the, uh, basically the upfront capital costs.
I think that's for the Indian leg set, that's high cover.
Which, what are we talking about?
No, no, no. It says referendum support, that, that would, that was a cost.
That's literally just them helping us, helping a Friends group or a city, uh, generating probably support for the revenue.
Okay, it's very close now.
Well, but there's, I think the referendum comes into play if we decide to go forward because we have excess of the shortfall when the collection is, and that's gotta come out of the budget.
Right.
Our commemoration, and we don't have a hundred thousand dollar laying around to cover that. So therefore, we have to have a tax increase to cover the cost.
Yeah, the, the referendum would be, would it be okay for the city to subsidize with this estimate, right? Of, uh, of what we would have to subsidize. Now, we could go and pay a feasibility study or get really solid construction quotes, and that number might change. And there's a question there, is how comfortably would you feel going to referendum with those estimates versus having a professional company do those estimates?
It's a little tricky, and as we've described before, by statute, the city operates under levy rules that the legislature has imposed. So if you assume, as Mark said, and I concur with that, we don't have an extra hundred thousand dollars rattled around in our budget, this will be in that add to the property tax-supported spending of the city. Indian voter approval. It's a little awkward to take a whole lot of explaining to go to the voters first. On the other hand, if the proposition is private fundraising, community fundraising, but at the end of the day, city ensures that it's gonna cost a hundred thousand roughly a year in tax money to do that, you might want an answer on how the community feels about that before, rather than after. Now, if that was a positive, uh, if that was affirmed by the community, and you can set those up for finite or indefinite periods, or if you're pushing constructor or request for paving cap, uh, that'd be quite a pat on the back for a fundraising, you're like, think for the community. Yep, if, if the vote was yes, yes, we would support raising our taxes, which is usually enough about one. Uh, to support this, still doesn't guarantee the drive is gonna be successful. So it'd be a good question to answer first, and it just seems it would. If, if the, if it had otherwise, then it might have otherwise.
But then, to Bonnie's point, I cannot answer for you how much is the re-occurring capital repairs are gonna cost, right? I, I wouldn't know that. Perhaps a company could give us an estimate in a feasibility stu- study, uh, or when they do construction work and things like that. But yeah, I wouldn't, the committee wasn't, couldn't, wasn't that good to try to figure out what the re-occurring kind of a long-term capital inputs would be. Uh, yeah, they're, they're not small, uh, and so...
Mike, I heard that the two Friends of the Pool, they have three responsibilities. In my mind, I think if you wanna do this, there's a scope and estimate cost initially. I, I'd like to see them raise all of it, to really be able to communicate why it is the city. If we got one in Arkansas, it's a referendum. And then they have the responsibility of raising six to seven million dollars that's gonna build the pool. And then the third responsibility, I, I'd like to see them accept is that it's ongoing capital cost. If something needs major dollars to cost a repair, we again don't have it in our regular budget right now. We can't spin around to raise levy again. So they'd have to step forward to take the responsibility, raise that money, or although we do share the grant fund, the same shirtless cost.
Would be a capital though.
I know, but still, we don't have the money.
But you don't, you don't have to ask to raise capital. But letting women still have life and... But the voters might have problems if they're gonna, if you, the council is out of funding enough to raise taxes for that service. And we do, just similar to what we do with the barren strip. The Friends don't pay for all that. We just made that every pay, if it gave us some, but they didn't pay for it all. It was like a hundred forty-seven thousand, I don't know, last time we did it, something like that, rings a bell. Yeah, rent can stay paid for most of it, but your rent beyond that is the city's responsibility. On the other hand, it's apples and oranges, but, and somebody maybe can help move the number. The library, the last three years did a massive interior renovation, put all the circuitry for all those recharging stations under carpet, re-carpeted. Uh, did things, it's, it's two to three hundred thousand, but it's entirely non-city, supported by the Friends. Santeras, right? Right, and that's a very, that's a very well-developed support infrastructure. So maybe it ate apples and apples, but there's a good example of how it can.
Tim, who'd be able to use the pool? Anybody.
Anybody. So people here on vacation who just come up, use the pool and whatever and...
You could pay to, pay a day pass, yep.
Okay.
And Mike's got one more slide according to this that kind of summarizes.
Yeah, this should be my, this, this one?
Yep.
Yeah, so these are my, I mean, summaries of what the committee kind of, uh, suggested for council. Is, it's that's committee, that city council moves to put the funding, construction of community swim center, uh, to a referendum vote in straight twenty-twenty-five. Full direct, set a professional feasibility study completed for modeling data prior to going to referendum. Analysis of population, demographics, scale of facility, technical analysis of the current pool site, alternate sites, capital cost estimates, and, uh, operating cost estimates. The payment for these, uh, feasibility study pieces would be funded by a five-one-one C three organization of Friends group, which I might add is not created, exists. So, uh, yes, that, that's the suggestion, yeah.
Here's my, my fear for this is, the longer it takes to raise six million, the higher the cost of pools.
Sure, yep.
So it's gonna be, feel like a moving target, right? It's okay to take years.
It's crazy, probably not, right? Could take a long time. Questions?
I have some questions. Yeah, um, one of the things I knew you already talked about it was about the future capital expenditures being our responsibility, the state's responsibility with support of the Friends of the Pool. And I'm just wondering, would there be like a kitty that would be for that assistance that has to stay at a certain level or higher, so there's always money there to help? You know, I would, I don't want it to be, you know, we're paying for capital expenditures and the Friends don't have any money to help out. And that's one of the things that was in the proposal.
Yeah, it would be, we'd have to work with that organization to have I laws and structures that have expectations for them, obviously, I, I would assume.
I got, just one other thing, two things rather. Um, is that it sounds like you have a, had some good conversations with the alternate locations?
Yep, general, yep.
I would like to see, or at least try perhaps, having a pilot program. See what worked, it might work out really, really well, and we could go with that.
You mean a pilot program with like potentially...
Like with the programming for, for someone with the kids?
Okay.
Yeah. If you were to do something like that, because it sounds like we could get some sort of break. And I think that these places are already built and they're, they're running, and, um, it'd be nice to be able to take advantage of them. And then the other thing too is that, you know, here recently, we've had some major dust-ups on council regarding purchases for like fire department, the police, public workshop. And these are priorities and what people actually need. Their ta, and they want their tax dollars to go towards those types of things that's, you can ride on the road or you've got, um, so you've got security with the police, you have, um, you know, emergency to help you out, and that's, that's where our tax dollars should be going. And this whole thing about, you know, our taxes, it would only be raised, what was it, twenty, twenty-five bucks? Well, I'll tell you what, people are already upset that the taxes are really high. And I think it was, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, as of last year, we finally got, it was the, uh, the money that was, we were getting charged for the high school finally caught up on itself. Was that correct? It was like ten years, right, that we had to...
Oh, I mean, I guess I'm not following, the, the money the community has spent for the high school related to the debt, is this issue?
I think so, yeah. Whatever we had...
And that's been retired, but obviously the community has voted to reinvest.
Isn't there something else that just retired last year?
Well, I, I think that was the big reason retirement, that person, the voters group. A pretty big bond issue for the capital, we see going out of the middle school. It was some...
And I think... Right. But I, I don't think people really realize how much that's gonna bump up their taxes. You know, so I mean, there's already gonna be an increase, it's, you know, painful. Um, I think, yeah, to have a referendum, but be crystal clear with the community that this is, this is how much it costs. You know, and I, I, they have to, they have to know the details. Whether they read it all or not, it's, it's up to them, but, but I, I think that we, you know, we should, we should try a pilot program anyway because this pool isn't gonna be built. This, you know...
In reference to that, so Manitowoc, this was us subsidizing costs. So we don't have a bunch, we'd have to come up with money to do that, right? If we wanted to make it... If we wanted to make it cheaper for somebody to go to the Manitowoc, right? So we'd have to decide where that money would come from. YMCA, they said that perhaps they would do, you know, a partnership with a special rate or use time or something like that, that I guess that could be figured out. The high school is the really the best opportunity to do something and we tried it this year, we just didn't get somebody to help us out to run, run things in the afternoons. Um but this one, we were ready to pursue this year anyway.
See, that's the thing is that we don't have the money just to go ahead and do it as you budget for it, I mean. Whatever, what other areas that you have to sacrifice some cash to fund this, you know, you can't, we're not limitless or bottomless. So I'm just wondering, you know, it's in the buzzwords of need and want, you know, I think this is great, I think this is. A bad time to try this, but what time is ever gonna be a good time, you know, but I think, yeah, referendum, let's see what everybody has to say.
Pilot, I like your thought process, what would a pilot program cost at the high school, I mean, it's not that much money. We would be figure out a way to.
We were gonna already do it within our Parks and Rec budget this year.
Okay, that.
Wasn't gonna cost the city more.
So.
That's a Manitowoc swim center, you can rent lots of time there, can't?
To test a swimming pool.
Yeah.
Uh no.
No.
Not like the pool itself, no.
No.
So um I don't know, I haven't put a number or anything for the Manitowoc aqua- Manitowoc Aquatic Center on. I mean, what would a subsidy be, six dollars per person, would the city to ever say every two rivers resident that goes there would get a three dollar discount or something? I I don't know, um we'd have to come up with that money. Um the Parks and Rec budget was gonna, we were gonna figure out a part-time position, we felt like we had the bandwidth that the for the high school pool to have somebody there in the afternoons and help us with that one. Um yeah, so.
Well, to subsidize it, I mean, I I'm thinking sponsorships because some organizations can really, really come and turn that in grants. But um Greg, can a municipality do sponsorship drives, can we use sponsorship money?
Oh yeah, I mean, you see.
We can, okay.
Just municipalities with sponsorships for all kinds of things.
Okay, so maybe if we were to do that to cover the cost for the aquatic center.
We go after sponsorships all the time, that's how they pay for fire routes and.
Special ones.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what the rules were.
I probably wouldn't, honestly, in terms of spending our time and energy, we would just hire a part-time physician and staff out somewhere at the high school. Have more activities than.
It could be more beneficial to the community to keep it here.
Yeah, to keep it here. I wouldn't waste our time to do that.
At least we could see what the community responds to.
Sure.
Oh, but in addition, if the Y is willing to partner.
Right.
That's a great idea too.
And in addition.
I guess the other question I had, does a partnership with one of those other entities necessarily mean subsidizing the cost of attendance? Manitowoc, doesn't to my knowledge, do that for their residents to use the aquatic center? Or is it more programmatically packaging something? And maybe we don't wanna get into this cause you spoke to the issue of keeping an eye on kids in large aquatic facility. But is it more like, no, there's a baby and it reflects true cost, but after your child finishes up uh. I'm sorry, summer school program, let's say at the high school, um you know, three afternoons a week, there's a bus and there's supervision and if you sign them up. We get them to the aquatic center and back and you can be assured, it's a day camp, it's an aquatics day camp. Uh I don't know where the price point ends up from whether it be subsidizing or not, but it seems the subsidy may even be part of the equation, it's all logistics of. Getting kids there and back and doing it safely.
Somebody who's run camps, I'm terrified, terrified of taking kids.
Yep.
And it would be more difficult, I would think, Mike, from what you've experienced at Manitowoc operating versus what you've experienced with your own people running a camp at the high school, would you? You have better control.
Yeah, we would just, and it'd be public, so your parents would have to come, you'd be less likely to pull you, if you're under twelve, you'd have to parent. And then the high school.
Have have we thought about a lifeguard program that we used to have here years ago?
We don't have a certified lifeguard instructor on staff.
I think we lost Miss Chia, she was the instructor.
Okay, yeah, we we have not, we we haven't tried to recruit necessarily uh for that, but um I'm not aware of anybody that can be that. Uh YMCA does uh lifeguard trainings. Um that's where the vast majority of kids are going.
And what swim center got their lifeguards?
Yeah. And I think the high school or Lincoln uh as well, I think there's a instructor at Lincoln.
And what does it cost, about fifteen bucks an hour for a lifeguard?
Yeah.
We do programs with Manitowoc maybe and and like like Greg was talking about and as long as maybe we have lifeguards available.
I don't see why we'd go to Manitowoc to do them, I would just do them at the high school. Adam?
Uh I mean, a couple of things here as we, as I heard from multiple other people talking and talking about having a kitty or so to to fund these things. And again, um we would wanna work with a friends group and that's not ever a guarantee with anything. And to my knowledge, we don't have any guarantee or any uh connection with uh Mariners Trail. As far as keeping up on the trail, uh the city does take out capital to help with that. And yes, we're very lucky that we do get support from the Mariners Trail, but uh from their friends group, but there's no guarantee that they exist next year. I mean, they 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 can just as easily fold up tomorrow and they wouldn't be there to help us and and the full boat load of the maintenance of that trail would be us. And right now, we already do maintain it, I know we sweep it, I see itself there sweeping it. Um obviously, it just got repaved and so on and so forth. Um using other facilities, I was thinking the same thing, uh it'd be cool to use other facilities, but. When you do take a deeper look at it, you do look at the bikeable walkable aspect of it. And kids are off in summer, parents are still working, uh and people that have younger kids such as myself rely on babysitters. And and those babysitters to get them to another city, uh or even across to the high school are not gonna be all that easy for them to do. And I know you can say you can take a bus or do a camp that goes to Manitowoc, but when you have young kids, they may not stay that long. They may get tired, uh try taking a three-year-old to a water park, try taking them to Bay Beach, the day yesterday. It 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 doesn't always work out with the timing. All right, and then when you're stuck in that situation, how do you get them back? You just wait for the bus that might be coming in a couple hours to to get them back? I don't know if that's a real feasible way of doing it. And the other way, the other thing I look at is the depth of the water, five feet?
Yeah.
That's pretty deep for probably most people under the age of ten.
They didn't have a kid?
No.
Uh uh which.
Manitowoc High School.
Man, the high school, the high school's the one that's five foot.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
We're not in our community area, right? The five feet is is way too deep for them to go so good as well, that's, that that's. Shouldn't even be a thought, that's.
Well, then you gotta have a parent with them at all times for the most important ever thing.
And then the other thing, when we talk about needs and wants, we can talk about that every year, uh about needs and wants, obviously, we we fund a lot of wants. We fund a a lot of things that I would consider to be a want versus a need. I mean, most things within our city, not most things, they should put it that way, but a lot of things that we have are wants. Uh you point to a lot of recreation programs, I think those are, a lot of those are wants. As far as um bands that went on at the beach or at Central Park, is that a need? Of course it's not. Is it sponsored a lot by sponsorships? Yeah, is there some of the money that comes out of the budget? Yeah. When you take a look at the fact that we we take money out of the concession stand at the Shota Beach, that helps fund that. General Fund helps fund the the concession stand and uh full-time employees over at the rec department. Um buying special things or better models of things that I would say that we don't always need, we still get them, are they wants or needs? Bike trails, are they wants or needs? Um you can go right on down the list, uh Central Park East, want or a need, there's a lot of city money in that.
Police cars.
That's it?
Police cars.
A hundred thousand dollar per player on the Shota.
Right, I love a hundred thousand, and I love it too, but I believe it's a want or a need, of course, it it's a it's a want, it's a thing that we should want or need to better it. And I think this could fall in that same category.
Okay, so the next time we're trying to decide on purchasing a new fire truck, it's not gonna be a big deal?
Does that have to do with it?
It has a lot to do with it, it's tax dollars.
Yeah, well.
Costs.
You know, that's a need.
That can be a need to you, that's not a need to someone else, you can't speak for the whole population.
It's gonna be a need to them when they have an issue and there's nobody to go out there and help them.
And the the fire truck that's there isn't gonna help them, I mean, you're off topic for stuff, but that's.
No, I totally disagree.
Well, how how do we, how do volunteer fire departments do it? I see them with a lot of older.
But that's, why talk about that? Cause we are not a volunteer.
Right, that's why.
I'm just saying that we we argue, spend so much time on nickel and dime in some of these, these. Departments that we need and we need to support them.
Do you know, do you know that we rely on the volunteer fire departments to help us?
I know that we have up outside agencies.
Sure, the volunteers, the same fire trucks come and help the city through to fight their fires. Put their old equipment that.
Let's put it this way, I'll just make it easy.
Sure.
I would like to see us spending our dollars, which are limited and people don't like paying taxes. And upping the the amount of our taxes is not gonna, you know, it's not gonna sit well. But whatever it is that we generate, I think it should go to, it should go to the things that we need.
That's a rough assumption.
Our infrastructure and that, this is, and I'll tell you, this is no, no reflection on you, Mike, because I think the Parks and Rec Department is fantastic. But we spend a ton of money on Parks and Rec and you get a lot of grants, you, you know, I mean, you, you're like the grant genie. I don't know, you do a really nice job. And we need, there is a need for those things. Um and there is a need for um different things that go on downtown, like with the events, because that draws in people. And I've talked to some people who now live here, it's because of, it's because of having, going to an event. And they see what a nice community we are, we've got people moving here. So, I mean, you know, you've got the pros and cons for all of it, but um I just, I just have a problem with this. Put it to referendum, if that's what the the residents want, well, you know, just go for it. But I think it's up to them to just kinda determine where they want their tax dollars to go.
That's what this is for.
Right, and I think it's a great idea.
I'd like to add that with a referendum would be a great way to see what the community wants really in this whole process because. The question of capital funds in the future is an issue, but Friends of Pool hopefully would be available to help us with that in the future. But that that's the only real issue that, not tripping on a little bit, but. I'd also like to see the Friends of the Pool cover the scope and estimate costs of what the pool's gonna be, cause we're talking, you know, from twenty to forty-five thousand dollars. We don't have that in the budget.
That's what the, that's what you're not.
So it's okay, so that's what they're gonna do, they're gonna cover that. And then they're gonna be responsible for completing the whole pool cost scope tells us it'll be. And if we don't have the money available, we don't set the project, right?
Right, but you don't wanna start it, you don't wanna.
Still got the money, the people. Yeah, well, let's see what the people want, if we wanna have the money available, we can.
Right.
Or you would write that into the referendum.
But some of these referendums are written so horribly.
Check them.
You know, and this referendum, I would, I'd like it to to be able to explain itself.
So in concept, is that, anybody else with any thoughts on this or?
I like the idea of having the feasibility study and everything else done before the referendum.
We almost have to.
Yeah, trying to get some concrete numbers.
You put it in the.
How do we get a friends for the pool without a pool?
Pardon?
How do we get a friends organization for a pool that doesn't even exist yet?
Adam?
Well, anyone can form a pilot one C three when you go through the the organizational process.
Right.
You don't have to have a pool to do it.
Right, but like, are we gonna get enough people interested to form a group, I guess, is what I'm doing, asking?
Well, I would imagine that the the group already had a five oh one C three, I'd imagine a lot of those would jump back up.
Okay.
That that's what I'd imagine, that's not up the roster.
Okay, I was just curious, clarify.
Can hold up in the background, like.
That's up the stack.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I'm just, I love the friends. Yes, yeah, yeah, okay. So, um members of the existing uh community pool who are on the meeting, they have already looked into setting up a friends of the pool committee that was their intent. So that is something that is in the process as soon as we give the ability to go and do it, but. So yes, there's already a community arranged for that, we certainly take other volunteers, always, always, preferably people with big wallets. I'm wondering something, but I know that is already a form of thought. Thank you.
Can I just clarify, can I just clarify a question I can have, I'm a certain. Um in regard to the capacity of the family swim club, I'm sorry, I don't know that number. But when you look at the capacity of the Manitowoc Aquatic Center, it currently is five hundred seventy-three, or that went down for whatever reason. And they currently have to have twenty lifeguards on deck at all times with a staff of thirty-three per day. Because of the way that that particular facility was developed, the life spots that Mike, that Mike even mentioned earlier, they're required. So the two rivers swim club, I believe they had to have three on deck because of the way that that particular pool was set up. But I think that number actually is state regulated. I don't think any facility gets to pick that, I think that's chosen by whoever that will be developed in the capacity and such. Cause I know like if we got to a certain number, they had to have another person on deck. So, um I think it had to be three at the swim club with two on deck, but if that number rolled, then they had to, that third person had to come back out. So that one is a a regulated and I believe it's the state that regulates that one, so that's how they come up with those particular numbers.
So you have somebody on call, just in case.
No, they would, what they would do is that third person was at the swim club, but they would actually run that office area, so they could sell their things such.
So you don't have that third person.
They were there just in case.
Correct, yeah.
And I believe that that was required, that that third person had to be there. But they didn't have to be on deck, um watching the kids at or the people swimming. But it's saying that particularly, the the two that were there had to um pay attention to the particular number and whatever number that is that's regulated. That third person had to come up and close that office area and help them.
Did the community pool have any method of anticipating future major capital repairs, if you have fun, prepare for the future?
So I was on the board of the family swim club for a couple, for a number of years.
Yes.
Um when I came on, they were already in financial hardships at that point in time. We did have to have a small capital campaign, I believe is how that was run. Um because there was an ordinance that went through, because there was somewhere within our nation, a young girl drowned. Um and it turned out that it was, I believe, a family pool, but it had something to do with like their filter, like she was, it was, she was like sucked to the bottom of the pool. And after that, there was a a regulation that was required in order to open, you had to have this thing that went over the top. And I'm sorry, I don't know that word because somebody else has it.
They can just also.
To that part, but um we had to raise the money that particular, like we had a year or whatever it was to raise the funds for that particular piece of equipment for that referendum. Um in order to even open the pool that following year, so um. There, the numbers at the family swim club were actually up, I have down here, that must have had a hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars in revenue last year. But because it's a fifty-year-old pool, because it had been so old, it's not able to open any longer. Because they needed, because they the, they are redoing everything, so that's where that. That money wasn't there any longer to be able to open again to cast inspections.
So can you tell us what the average membership was recently? In in terms of how many?
Oh, that was, so that's my answer, I don't have to finance it in my house, so, um it had been three hundred fifty dollars. So, um, it had been three hundred fifty dollars for.
No, no, I mean the, how many children were signed up to be members, or how many family members?
I don't know that, I wasn't on the board the last few, like, five, six, seven years, so I don't know if their numbers, their numbers of family were up.
They have.
At the end of it.
The the budget that I saw from them, they had the single best year financially in the history of the pool this last year. Uh, but they, you know, that was one year, uh, so they they still had a lot of capital costs, right?
And I would venture to guess as well, because of the way that that particular pool was established way back in the, I believe it was the sixties at that open. When that one opened, the scale of it was a small family swim club. So, when you look at the feasibility study, the city of Two Rivers is much larger, so the capacity would be obviously far bigger, because you're going to have, you know, more people able to do that.
But we still have to maintain the facility, that's why.
Absolutely.
And and obviously, you're at a challenge with that, and that would be, we have to proceed carefully too, but.
The vast majority of cities are funding the capital.
Yeah. We're getting the money from, we do, these taxes are cutting, what we're doing right now, I'm not focused, but it's work, trying to work on that situation. I just want everybody to be aware of what's gonna happen, and if the community wants a pool, that's why I think we ought to throw it out to the referendum and see, but there's risks.
Um, what kind of voter turnout do we have for referendums? And is there a way to advertise that this is coming up so that we get a better voter turnout for it?
Part of it depends on when you schedule it, you know, is it the November general election, and then even numbered year, is it the April council elections? Our clerk can tell us that very widely.
Yeah, I mean, it all depends what is on the ballot, if we had ten percent voters show up for elections, and we have eighty percent voters show up for elections, so.
Because the eighty percent give us their opinions, sometimes you, we're full of people that are like to complain and not show up initially, then vote and do stuff, and then.
I can stop this, we just go from now.
That's something too, that the friends group could, you know, advertise and just make it known that people wanna come there to vote solely on the referendum. People are allowed to do that, because of whatever part of the ballot.
I explained to people, our stuff goes on in our bill, in our billing and stuff, and you know, why don't, don't yell at me, because you need to, they must wanna do this.
At a time, I think, maybe our conventional wisdom about elections has changed, because Mark just said, is this November too soon? There's so much noise about this November right now, I don't know, but how how do you get past the partisan noise that's going on for the general election? Might be something to be said for a spring election, which is more focused on municipal, but doesn't have a great turnout. You got a number of folks in the back row.
Yeah, so the reason we constructed the recommendation this way was simply because of the voting record and timing of the November election. And it buzz around that, and we focused away from a referendum. The time, time sensitivity to do the feasibility study, that it didn't be done. And to answer Mr. Fitner's uh comment or request, how detailed would the referendum be to answer all of the questions of the community? Uh, the the friends group would need to put together an appropriate referendum with enough time, served by the council, prior to the election in the spring. So that was the consideration behind the timeline, uh, to shoot through a spring timeframe.
And Amanda, typically, April ballot issues need to be wrapped up, the December time, or some early January?
Early to anywhere.
Early January.
And a parent perspective, the like April ballots that just, or the August ballots just came are full two pages. So there's a lot of federal election, or offices on the November ballot, a lot.
It'd be hard pressed to do as before in the spring, anyway, with the feasibility study, that's, that's a tall word.
Is there a cost involved with the referendum?
It all depends on when you do it, and if there's other races on the ballot or not. The costs are broken down by the types of races on the ballot, and what the city versus school versus county all pays for.
So is there an average cost for a referendum?
I couldn't give you that number off the top of my head.
Could you find out?
I could.
In the interest, you can know how much this would have cost the city.
I mean, if you do it with the April election, there wouldn't really be an additional cost.
I'd score a bit.
Because if, you know, because if they're ready to.
Municipal race.
Right.
So what do you need from us tonight? Not to stop all the discussion, but.
Well, I guess you guys could take action on this recommendation, if you wanted to. And that would give a lot of ammo for a friends club to start moving forward in earnest, yes.
Any more questions?
Yeah, um, if you're, I I mean, you have to, you do have to get an analysis or an idea of how much this would cost so that the people can know who's paying for that.
The feasibility study.
The friends group?
The friends group, yes.
Oh, okay, I just love it. And also, I just want to make the comment, um, people come out for something if they want it. I mean, I don't think it matters what, when you put it on, if they think that they don't want this, or they do want it, they're gonna come out. That's my opinion anyway.
Okay, I guess if the council, just a suggestion, if the council were to consider an action, say, you know, you're you're willing to consider putting a vote on referendum targeted this rate of twenty twenty five in front of voters of Two Rivers on their willingness to raise their taxes. Whole words out here, to support the operation of a new public pool, provided the fundraising is all done privately, um. Maybe that would be a best speed, we have this presentation tonight. Uh, we can share this presentation, which wasn't posted before tonight's meeting publicly. There can be a formal resolution prepared, reflecting some direction given tonight, and have it on next Monday's agenda, July one agenda. That way, we we really set this up for presentation, identifying any more information even for a decision. That that'd be my suggestion. Council, your call, council, if you'd like to direct, place this on Monday's agenda or action relative to the council's willingness to consider a referendum issue on operating letting support, that that would be a reasonable pace, isn't it?
Yeah, I think Mike and and the whole, and I can be did a outstanding job putting this together. Just with not knowing some numbers and and not guessing, but getting as close as you can to what the cost would be.
It's very highly qualified people helping us do this, so I'll give Catherine a shout out, Catherine helped put together the whole, uh, the whole presentation for us. Um, a few tweaks here and there for me, and then Christine Daleen was amazing on the budget stuff, uh, Mary went with researching with me, did site visits. Heather, our senior center supervisor, helped out uh with a lot of business uh operation stuff from other cities, so we all bitched it, so it was great.
Yeah, I think it was an amazing job, there was a lot of good information there, so. Yeah, leave it up to everyone else, what they feel, what they wish, how we should forward.
I would just say, so we consider, assuming it gives you enough time between Monday's rule and the election in spring, you get it all all done and. That sounds like a logical choice to give the community information on the side.
Yeah, just like how the public schools did, they did a real good job of communicating and having forums and stuff like that too, that got a lot of people interested in it, I think this would be a, this definitely has to go before referendum, but I think between now and spring, I think, you get a lot of good information out there.
And and we could at least put some interim of health deadlines in there, you know, but that feasibility study would really need to be in hand. I'm guessing by October, November, for everyone to be able to di- digest it and pencil to act on putting something on the April ballot. So, we can flesh that out a little without trying to put the organization in any kind of box.
So we should, sure, hands once, put it on the agenda from Monday.
Sure. I think it's pretty unanimous, if we, if we would have put it on ballot, we're. Yeah, just like how Greg explained it.
It's like a consensus to me.
Yeah, it's unanimous.
All right, so yeah. We will come prepared and what.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, you did a lot of hard work.
Yes, thank you. Okay, on to number five.
USB.
Okay.
Uh, this one is not up to date, uh, so we should give you the most up to date. Oh, you wanna put something else on there? You weren't working, uh, was he working on your media? No, no, okay, and is there a media loaded on this laptop? Yes. Okay.
The words that were written.
I don't know, good question.
Okay, number five, consideration of the city welcome sign on Memorial Drive. Improvements are needed, it's a current location acceptable to the city council.
Yeah.
Uh, recommended action, provide direction to staff as to the location of the sign, city manager recommends affirming the current location.
The reason, yeah, the reason I brought this back to, or brought this to council is not that I'm helping out on putting the new logo immediately on Memorial Drive.
On Facebook.
Um, yeah, it was there for a while, then it disappeared, done more with it. But I know you've heard some from some citizens there, but frankly, and I included a picture with the with the memo that went out to council. It it's in need of some lava there, the evergreens two two on either side of the sign are kind of ratty looking, thinking for some kind of juniper. Uh, and, you know, I think with some of the the funds that we have for trail maintenance and corridor maintenance, we could address that now. Um, may want to eventually address that when that sign shows some more wear, or depending on where the council stands. The so-called new logo is our brand, I don't know that long term, we want to have two brand images out there. But when we talked about a master plan for the whole Lake Shore, starting from in Manitowoc, where Two Rivers was just under the Chamber, to into town, one of the discussions was a master plan for that Spirit of the Rivers Way side. As part of that discussion, there was some advocacy, and I know Mark spoke to it, uh, council others may have, about moving the sign. You know, it's not at the city limits, it's not at the far south extent of the city's ownership. Uh, I presented a couple of concerns about that, if you go to the south, southernmost part of the city's ownership, remember, we own land in the city of Manitowoc now, we go all the way to that gravel parking lot north of the Chamber of Commerce, uh, which goes back to when the city did the, I'm sorry, Spirit of the Rivers Way side acquisition. So, I don't really want to go to the city of Manitowoc to get a sign permit, but welcome to Two Rivers sign in their community. And where does the city limits lie? It lies right where the easterly right of way edge for Woodland Drive would be if you extended it to the lake. So it's about a third of the way into the parking lot from the south. I think there's a lot to be said for leaving the sign, the welcome sign location where it is, you've got beautiful stone pillars, you've got electricity, yada yada. But before, A, scrounging around the existing budget for at least some landscape upgrades, or for the future proposing to council, uh, a replacement of the sign, if that is supported. I I just wanted to first get an answer to the simple question, do you like it where it is? And if we make further investment, is it okay to make it at that location? I like it where it is, um. Primarily, when you're coming in, you see that Spirit of River, Spirit of the River sign. I wouldn't want to detract from that, because then, I mean, they really need to slow down the turn. Um, and if we get too much sign pollution in that area, it might get missed. Plus, there's probably, I mean, those are some pretty substantial problems, I guess. So do you see, you'd like to go for the flag, like?
You know, plus, well, Bill and I went out there this weekend, and we took a really good look at the existing sign, and it's in really good shape. That blue is still really vibrant, there's some scroll work on there that I can see, they might wanna, um, get them shining again, I don't know if they would have to re, you know, refinish them or what. And then where the logo is, that could, that could stand with some, just some touch, touch up. And the thing is, what what I'm thinking is that when somebody comes into the city, they're looking at the words, okay, we're in Two Rivers now, I don't think they're critiquing our logos. You know?
What do you think about the sign on three ten, that needs a little love? But.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean.
It's an important issue.
I could probably use a facelift before this.
And a DOT sign?
Oh, it's a lot to like the rotary.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll wear that.
Yeah.
You don't think that's.
Uh, the shrubs around it are old and licky, they need to be removed and changed, and some of the lichen or whatever is in front of it. It's getting old and licky, needs three or two places. Other than that, it's beautiful, beautiful sign. And it should stay there, and I'm not biased when I talk about the fish tug on there, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful fish tug on there.
I had a, I had a couple of email, people emailed me that they, they like where it is, and I agree with them too, I like where it is. Um, but they'd like to see in the front floors and stuff like that, that's in the median, when you come into Two Rivers, with all the floors and everything, they'd like to see that there, just kind of, you know, consistency, but that would really, I think it would be a nice.
And then we're yellow day lilies there, that's installation is fifteen to twenty years old, so it's, it needs freshening up. And again, I think that, not that we have money hidden here and there, but I think with the money we have for trail maintenance and maintaining flowers on the way into town, most of which comes out of room tenants, um, we can manage to do some upgrading around the sign, but that's not getting into changing the graphics or the sign face.
Right.
That wasn't my primary interest, it's just before spending even a few hundred dollars to upgrade the landscape, if there was any strong feeling about relocating it, I don't want to be doing that. So, am I hearing any, any support for, am I hearing, uh, generally, I'm, let's say, consensus is leave that sign where it is? And leave, and leave that sign in place, as is, I mean, again, there aren't any resources budgeted to replace the the car for sale.
Well, and when you come into town, uh, on the restor building, it was recently painted white, and you have the big logo on there too, so I think that's a good indication right there that, yeah, well, that, that's Two Rivers. And then you see this sign, it's kind of, I think it's just nice that way, it's set up.
And Spirit of the Rivers does say so much about the community.
Yep. Yep, absolutely.
By the time you get to the welcome sign, you look over and there's a beautiful, modern hospital, it's a pretty good impression. Okay, that's all I'm looking for, I'm not hearing anyone saying, don't do anything until.
Does the city own the sign, my Woodland do this too?
We do, yeah.
All the organizations are.
Yeah, that's.
They could use a little.
That could be the organization, um.
The organization paid for their part.
I think historically, they, yeah, yeah.
Is there not budgeting funding for that this year?
Uh, Woodland, Woodland Industrial Park, yes.
Oh, industrial.
Yeah, and I understand, we, we really don't have great welcome signage on Highway forty two coming in from the north. Um, that would be worth a discussion with VT, I think, for that corner out there. We had a brief discussion about that with the former owners up there, uh, the other one is one forty seven coming into town.
Uh, DV, that whole that corner right there.
Yeah.
Because we either do it directly, I mean.
If we could work something right there, yeah, so.
I'll put something there, but.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing no objections to at least maintaining and doing modest upgrades of the landscaping at that current location. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, number six, report on current ordinance restrictions on dogs on and near city beaches.
Oh, yeah, uh, I understand this, this came up as a citizen communication at the last advisory record meeting, and could very well continue at the next advisory record meeting, which is in August, which would effectively, if there were changes, I would say, if there were going to be changes, would make it twenty twenty five, then. Um, I did want to point out, first off, if you've looked at our ordinance, I realized to my horror today, there's, there's typo in the code book, and it does not reflect the ordinance that was, when it was most recently amended in May of twenty nineteen by the council, I have written proof here, if you, if you really need it. Uh, but, whatever, this is an excerpt out of the current ordinance, sorry. As as it relates, this is out of chapter seven, titled seven of the code, harvest, as it relates to animals on the beach, and just wanted to review this, and then I'd ask Mike to speak to it too, and I know Chief Ben has some thoughts as well, as it relates to trying to regulate animals on the beach. Uh, so, at the show to beach, generally animal. Uh, so at Neshota Beach, generally animals are prohibited, May one through September thirty of each year, each season. Um, except that leashed animals are permitted between the hours of six AM and ten AM. Okay, so no, no animals on the beach during the summer, except during the early morning hours, six to ten. For purposes of this section, what is Neshota Beach? Neshota Beach is defined as the area at Neshota Park lying between the lakeward, late word, of the skip over the stripe through there, of the beach parking lots and the waters of Lake Michigan, inclusive of the concrete beach water. And that goes from the north pavement edge of the northernmost beach parking lot is extended to Lake Michigan to the south pavement edge of the southernmost parking lot. Oops, sorry. Or if you want to refer to a map, basically, yeah, from the north edge of the jet ski parking lot to the south edge of Lot One, line it up with the edge of those parking lots toward the lake. Everything toward the lake, inclusive of the beach walk, is considered beach. Now, what I pointed out earlier, sorry. I don't know how the typo ended up in the ordinance, but we went back to the May twenty-eight, twenty nineteen minutes agenda packet. And indeed, the ordinance amendment that was adopted didn't have those words, uh, concrete beach walk where it is. Because that's kind of confusing. If you start with the lakeward edge of the beach walk and then say that the beach as we define it is inclusive of that beach walk, well, why the heck are you starting from the side toward the lake then? So to my horror, I saw that, to my relief, I guess, I found we made a mistake when the final ordinance was codified. But what was in front of the council read as this shows with the stripe through. So that's status quo right now, uh, at the beach. Further, status quo at Neshota, uh, under, this shown undersea, leashed animals are allowed within a twenty-foot wide corridor along the south, the far south end of that area, providing a connection between the southernmost parking lot and the beach for access to the city-owned beach located south of said corridor. The south boundary of said corridor should be the south end of pavement of the southern. South. Oh, that's right. The corridor basically overlaps the parking lot by twenty feet. And it would be identified by signs and, yep, there's signs there. And that area to the south is for leashed animals. Everybody's in agreement on that. Yes, there was a, it was a, it was in the Facebook post, it came out of Parks and Rec. And, why am I not getting this? Sorry, I never should try to blow things up on the screen. And further, and that's very lightly highlighted in gray, you probably don't even notice it. Uh, the other question that would come up is the beach is along Memorial Drive and the access points up there, Bonnie brought that up. And the ordinance right now, I think it's crystal clear on that, just dog parks and Memorial Drive beaches, the requirement that animals be effectively controlled with a leash or in a cage, because you might have something other than a dog. You might have your mongoose with you or your cat or whatever. Shall not apply to dogs at any designated dog parks. We have the one at Xander. Nor shall it apply to dogs along publicly owned Lake Michigan beaches along Mariner Trail, Memorial Drive. These are permitted off-leash areas for dogs who are accompanied by their owner or other responsible person and effectively under the control of such person. So those are the areas we have. At Neshota, you can only be on the beach in the summer months, uh, from six to ten in the morning. Otherwise, everything from the parking lots to the water is off limits. Uh, but you've got that twenty-foot wide connecting corridor to get you out to the beach that lies south of Neshota to the north pier. That's an area you can have your dog at any time on leash. If you want an area for off-leash dogs on Lake Michigan, uh, publicly on beach, south of town, off Memorial Drive. So I don't know if council wants to direct changes there, but I think from a staff standpoint, we're very comfortable with what exists now. The discussion five years ago was, and I think it's still the case, there's pretty good potential for conflict between dogs and humans, especially little humans, uh, all along that beach, the concrete beach walk during the busy beach times. Chief, I know you had some other observations on that. You went out and looked at it today.
Yeah, so I, I mean, the side front, looking at some operings in the past year, I also went down there just to visually look at it. I'm sure some of you may have too. But today, even on a slow day, it was relatively mild. I think it was like sixty-seven out there around, so, um, I'd say maybe a quarter of that beach for the most part, at least up until five, we're going to do it a lot. Um, but in essence, there, there were people on both sides of that path, right up to the path. So anywhere where there was standing around that path seemed like an easy and accessible area for people to want to go. I'm a dog owner, I love dogs, don't get me wrong. But I also know that when my dog's got to go, it's got to go. And it doesn't matter where it's going to go, being a responsible dog owner, I'm going to pick up after my dog. That being said, I also would not want to sit anywhere where people's dogs are going. Uh, and there were plenty of people that was like both sides of that path. Just for, um, betterment of the. In addition to that, I would give numbers because most concerning to me is, um, you know, I've seen numbers go up with just dog complaints and dogs at large and dog bites in the recent, um, history. Um, and just in looking at past numbers, uh, for instance, I looked at, and this, this is a problem we deal with here in the city. We had three hundred and forty-three just animal complaints, complaints of dogs in the past year, which I thought was a sound thing. Twenty-six of those were dog versus human bites. Uh, three of which were vicious animals that were around the city just last year. Just at the beach alone, just on the side, just that portion of the beach, we had, um, seven of those at large complaints, uh, two bites biting people and one dog versus dog bite. And then the others were vicious. I can't really get the numbers out. Uh, but one, most recently, you might remember, we had a restaurant at the track to it, that was on the beach where, um, a dog ran straight into something. That one was a stray dog, uh, but majority of what we're dealing with is, again, congested area. And as you mentioned, my concern would be, um, just regular traffic, all horses, bicycles is something we deal with. You know, people on skates, anything else. And now when you're going to head in, the fact that they have dogs, whether on leash or not, are completely matters you can put around into the issues. That's my opinion.
Mike, that's been from Parks and Rec staff standpoint or any of you?
We would just, we've gone back and forth a lot on this, changing signs, there's a lot of sign has changed in the park. I'd put it on as correspondence at the ARB meeting because I felt like it was one person that brought it to our attention. Ask ARB if you're something concerned, if you're something you're concerned about, just go think about it. Ask people, get feedback if you want to. We could put it on the agenda for a future ARB meeting to discuss further. My opinion was, I wasn't necessarily going to change it from one complaint, uh, just because there's just a lot of wishing, washing, going back and forth on it. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of people, a lot of people along that pathway during the summer. Um, the core complaint from the person that brought it to my attention was that we should not allow dogs even on a leash from six AM to ten AM because that is confusing, basically, was the argument. I think most people, my opinion, have gotten used to that.
And going backfired, we based that on some other fairly popular public beaches on the Wisconsin side, the Michigan side, where before things get really crazy at the beach, they do allow dogs, not just like here on the walkway, but on the beach as well. So that's, that's the current state of regulation. Yeah, we had a misfire on one social media post. That ain't too bad, actually, the social media posts. Uh, but, um, if, I guess the most I could see doing here from staff standpoint would be, let the ARB discuss it further, the next regular meeting is July. If a change is in order, I don't know that it's so urgent it has to happen this year. Frankly, I'm, I'm hard pressed. I'm sorry, I'm just talking, I guess. So, thoughts?
I think I gotta agree with Mike. I think people are used to it. I go down to the beach a lot and, and people are pretty regimented in using the walkway to walk their dogs earlier in the morning. And you don't see any dogs after, uh, not, not, not on walking hours. But the people south of the, uh, where, where they're supposed to be out there with their leashes, they tend to do a lot of swimming with the dogs and a lot of off-leash activity, which I think the person in, in question had a problem with that.
If you've got a big dog, it's tough, so just to keep them on leash.
Right.
I'm not a big fan of law signs, but on the other hand, as many people as visit Neshota, do we have anything that points out there are off-leash dog beach areas? The south side of town, that might be just a general tourism thing.
I don't know if there's anything that says go to Memorial Drive.
Yep.
There is something that says off-leash area past the parking lots, but not off-leash.
So without plastering the show with more signs, you know?
There are a lot of signs at the end of Neshota.
Maybe that would be a nice positive thing to say. We can get that out through tourism too, because in a dog-friendly accommodation store, you name it. People, people want to take their dogs everywhere.
Well, and you think if you're a dog owner, you wouldn't want to go on Neshota Beach when you're busy? Leash or off-leash, just whether the dog's scared, whatever, you make, you know, the dogs will go. But if you can go on some of the Lighthouse Inn and go up there off-leash, there's hardly, there's not many people out there yet, so. To me, it makes sense the way it is right now.
So again, this is.
I, I go to, um, my Lighthouse Inn. Generally, um, there aren't that many dogs when I go, but when I see them, I get my dog over by me and usually the other person does too. Something I want to say about today, I think people have to be very careful about dogs because people don't teach their children how to act around a dog. I, I mean, just with my Saint Bernard, I met this girl, eight years old, and she's like, oh, can I go for a walk with you? And I'm like, where's your mother? And I'm looking for her mother and all of a sudden the girl grabbed my dog face to face, that big dog. I mean, lucky for me, she was pretty laid back, but that, I really hate that. I even told the mother, finally a mother dropped out of somewhere. And she, and I said, you know, your, your kid is whatever. And she go, oh, yeah, she really likes dogs. That's not the point. You know, if a dog doesn't know you, they don't know why you're reaching towards it and things like that. So in that way, I would support no dogs on the beach early in the morning. You don't know when kids are going to be out there and how they act. Why didn't we change that? It was always not allowed in the summertime.
When I looked back at, and this was five years ago, the day of the time was, do you simply at all times allow them on that walkway? There was one option that it, that at least we presented and I guess had been suggested. Uh, can they be on that walkway at all times other than Fourth of July, Labor Day weekend and other special events? Or special times that is designated by the council? And that was a little awkward and, and rejected, so.
You know, and the other thing that's happening that I know is people are not picking up after their animals. I, it kind of makes me mad because it's so disgusting. I don't want to be stepping in it. I mean, and I don't want my dog bringing it in the house, you know, things like that. And I don't know what you do about making people open.
And face it, I think I mentioned at the last regular meeting, we have these on the books. It's not a priority enforcement issue relative to just so many other things in the community.
Well, I know.
Chief, yes. I was just gonna add, I do agree with Mike in the fact that, you know, again, we're talking about congestion. She's talking about walking your dog, you know, there's different evidence you can take. But it isn't when you're on small trails and then you got to come at each other. It was the same concerns and I look at the beach the same I do with our major events downtown where we had the same issues where, you know, what, people bringing their dog into a, our, congested area and have our same concern.
I was going to say what Ben just said, that, yeah, we did go through that, um, prohibited dogs during events. Or even on the end of there's a debate. But honestly, I mean, I, I love dogs. And, but they're dogs, they're animals. And if you're in an area where you have a dog off their leash and they see a dog down the beach that they don't like, how are you going to control them? They can take off just like that. And animals are animals. It might be a really nice dog. And, you know, like the owner says, yeah, the dog is really friendly, go ahead and pet it. I, I'm still reticent to pet that dog. I don't know what to expect. So actually, my opinion, what I would like to see is people beach, doggy beach. And just let the people have fun and not worry about dogs off leash. And I, I think down there is a great, a great place to bring your dog because it is congested. You can have a little bit more peace than, you know, just a little bit more peace and play with your animal.
On Memorial Drive.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And actually, we don't tell people when they pull off on those waysides that this is an area where, you know, having your dog off leash down at the beach is permitted. That, there aren't too many signs out there. That might be, that might be. Yeah, but that's, that's the current state of play in the ordinance. And sorry, we, we kind of stumbled across that typo that ended up in the code that's published. So.
So do we want this to go back to ARB or do you want to just make a decision, want them to just make a decision about the six to ten AM?
The only advantage to the early morning decision walking to the beach is that an older person can get to the beach with the passway, it's easier on the walk to dog, you have the beach, you want the dog, play in the water if they want. If you go on that lower pier, it's pretty steep, it's kind of rocky, it's tougher for an older person. Get down there, get the dog down there. That's, that's the reality of the situation.
There are a lot of, somebody mentioned, if you go, I don't go down to the beach that, really that often, but when you do, there's a whole different crowd. There are people that are regular walkers that I think are accustomed to taking their dogs there then. And face it, most families don't show up before ten o'clock in the morning.
I would bet those regulars, they probably won't be able to, of course you may be. They pick up the poop too. That's a funny one.
I would be inclined to say leave it alone, to be honest.
That's what I was gonna say.
And there's a rebar dark statue that follows that, you're right, I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, I would say leave it alone. It's not that confusing.
You know us?
We'll assume status quo unless there's direction to do something else. I can report that back to Mr. Graham, sort of. Of course, I don't know if that's, still doesn't accrue the ARB talking about it, but they're August.
So the consensus is leave it as is? Yeah?
That's what I would suggest.
Oh, raise your hands, who wants to keep it as is?
Keep it as is.
I'm okay with it as is, but I think you should go back to ARB just to give a
That's fine, we can do that too.
A recommendation out of them. It's not going to happen this year, obviously, for me in August, there's not going to be type, you know, back and species anyway. But that gives them an opportunity to go through with their citizen board and see what happens.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too.
Okay, not inconsistent with that consensus.
No, that's true.
Yep. Okay, okay, that's all we have for that one. Now, this being Parks and Rec work session, uh, I'll defer back over to Mike for a discussion of the Riverside Park master plan, which is such a massive file that I couldn't even download it.
It's, I got it on the desktop.
You do?
Oops, is that yours? Oh, there it is.
It might be, okay.
So I think I mentioned this at the last, at our last meeting. Um, I went to my first ARB meeting. And Mike showed this and I was pretty impressed with the work that, that group had done. I don't have it on the, for what, Jeff took us on it previously. So I asked Mike if he could just present that to us because I thought it was a really nice plan for a park that hasn't been given a lot of attention over the years.
Let's do this. So this is Riverside Park right now.
So this is Riverside Park right now. I'm not fully up to speed on all the history of Riverside Park, but I know that the Stone Water Management Pond used to be a baseball field. At some point, that got switched. The other important piece of history here is that the park was developed on land and water conservation funding. So it's federal funding for recreational spaces. And that means we are required to keep it as parks and recreation space open to the public in perpetuity. If we wanted to change uses for this, we would need to replace a, uh, an equivalent amount of parks space somewhere else to change the total use. So yes, it's kind of a funky shaped park. It is in need, definitely in need of some TLC. The front work of the park looks kind of nice. But it's got an interesting setup in that all the activities feel like they're at the back of the park. The hard to see, uh, so from security and safety type of even just feeling that way, the park feels kind of tough in that regards. So this is the side, although I'm blanking on the name of the street. There's a breakover here. Uh, that's River Place. And then School Street, so that's on this side, and School Street is on this side. So that street is, yeah, uh, seen some wear on there, but that is really your way to go back into the park. Right? You're gonna go back into the park. Not a super welcoming entrance to the park. That's the other side of, uh, School Street. So I've heard a number of times that this street floods. I think my observation is that it's not river flooding that backs up into there. It's street flooding that gets it into there.
That whole end was flooded for probably three months or four years.
From the river or from?
From the river.
But that's when the river was really good high.
Really, really high?
Yes.
Okay. Probably when you had the super high lake levels too, yeah.
That's a probably major.
Yeah, I don't think there's proper infrastructure there before, and I don't know what Mr. Henley knows, but Jim McDonald said that there should be a rain guard back there. Something like that to, um, help with that situation. It's just a piece of low layup, you know?
My observation is it's all on the street.
What?
My observation is the flooding's all on the street, not really in the park.
Well, I'd say.
Well, the park wasn't.
Yeah.
There was a horse on that street getting sandbagged and all property.
Okay. But the park's been fine, really, in terms of flooding. It's really the street that's the issue, yeah. Uh, so this is the parking lot, looking at the Stone Water Management Pond. Uh, that is private property. This is the river. Parks grew this winter, cut down a lot of dead ash trees. Cleaned up this river bay, uh, river, uh, front a little bit, getting dead ash trees out. This is the current skate park, so, um, in research, working with architecture, really a metal structured skate park is very, very old school. You don't really do this anymore. You put all, all, all concrete, the salies in, now they're skate parks. They basically last forever if it's concrete. So this park is starting to, the skate park is really at the end of its lifespan. It's in rough shape, and so we, whether or not we want to make a, we gotta make a decision what we're gonna do with it one way or another. If it continues to be a skate park or if it just moves on to something else. So we're gonna get some survey data that's gonna kind of guide where the plan. Stone Water Management Pond, I've been meaning to ask Matt, is there, there's, is there an exit? Is there an outflow to the river from this?
Should be.
There should be. So, uh, lily pads only like moving water. They have to have flow. Mosquitoes also don't like moving water. So generally, this pond is really good shape in terms of ecologically. I, I don't think necessarily this pond has any more mosquitoes than anywhere else in Wisconsin during the summer. Probably. So, uh, I've seen a lot of wildlife around this pond. This is all part of the park. This is the, this is a gravel path, mostly grown over with turf grass now. I was around that. There's a full shot of the parking lot. Full shot of the riverfront. Skate surfaces. I avoided the back feet in the pictures. Well, I could definitely. Okay, the building. So I don't know if anybody remembers this, but I, I was going through director's files and I found this photo. And apparently, we moved that, that building into place, actually. So that was a repurposed, uh, building that got moved into place.
Yeah, that building used to sit in a portion in the old Washington Park. Most of Adams, that's now occupied by condos and apartments. Part of the Washington Highlands of all.
So my understanding, this, this shelter was closed maybe the year before I started, so probably 2021, because it was badly vandalized a lot. And, uh, and so it just got shut down. So there hasn't been a restroom at Riverside since. But it's worse than just vandalism at this point because these doors won't open because the whole building is settled and shifted. So the doors won't even open on the restrooms. So there's a lot of work to be done to make this building functional again, even if we wanted to try to solve the vandalism issues. Uh, I didn't have any inside pictures. We use it for storage. It's actually a really important storage building for us in Parks and Rec because we put stuff in the restrooms. And then this door on the left here is kind of an open room. Judy Goodchild tells me she used to throw, have meetings in this building, at this site. So we store a lot of stuff there. There's old donors from the skate park. Relatively new, my predecessor Terry, I think in her tenure, they installed newer play equipment there. These are just few small things. Basketball courts, lots of breeding space. Yeah, so that's, that's what we're working with right now in terms of Riverside. So a lot of ways, it's kind of a liability for us. A lot, a lot of use, probably not a lot of productive use going on right now. I do occasionally see skateboarders out there, uh, right now using it, kids, sometimes adults. So we started this process, uh, last year, and I'm gonna skip to the end, actually. I don't want to go through all the survey data because there's a lot of stuff, a lot of information here. We had 440 people complete an online survey to give feedback about Riverside Park. In context, the Parks and Open Space Plan survey we did last year, we had like 337 people complete the full Parks and Open Space Plan survey. So more than 100, 100 people more filled out the Riverside Plan than just the Parks and Open Space Plan. So there was a lot of, uh, interest in Riverside. Major takeaways was, well, a major takeaway was the age distribution on the survey results. On the Parks and Open Space Plan, it was all shifted older. Forty-five, fifty-four, fifty-five, sixty-four, and sixty-five plus were the main groups. This all shifted lower, down to eighteen to twenty-four, twenty-five to thirty-four year old age groups. Drastically different than the Parks and Open Space Plan. So then, there was a lot of, generally a younger audience that was filling out this survey. Do you have children living in your household? Asking about what audiences are under served. Uh, high school age children was the number one vote getter there. At middle school age children also. Do you feel that Two Rivers Sees is a skate park? Pretty resounding response here, yes. Riverside's a good location, was the primary spots. Yes, but another location to consider, should be considered, was still 15% of the vote. No, there's not enough interest. I had 26% of responses, and then there was 45 other random things, uh, just put it here. So if you want to look in depth, you're welcome to. You have all the results. There was a lot of feedback. At the time going into the plan, one concept that I was kicking around in my head was, well, if we need to drive usership into this park, it's, it's not getting used. We need a user group that's gonna care for it, gonna be there, gonna use it. A large senior population, can we put some senior focused amenities at that park? That would give a user group that would care about it, drive some usership. We have a lot of traction, good traction, senior center programming, uh, doing well lately. So overall, that idea was liked, that we'd kind of maybe steer Riverside in that direction. But then there was also a resounding amount of additional feedback that, like, we need a skate park. Very much so. And so we kind of, kind of steered towards that, the uses that it already has, but just trying to update those things sometimes. Lots of comments in here about safety, graffiti, and needing security and lighting, uh, cameras, and all those good things. What are your must haves for visiting a park? This, this question was important to me because I've seen this pan out very similar in other major park surveys in other park districts. The most important things people want are a restroom. They want a clean park, and they want a place to walk. Those are usually the top three things you want in a park. And that panned out that, look at the responses, 86% of all respondents said they want a restroom, right? And, and that's probably a major reason why that park is not getting used. Clean park and safe setting were the next two highs. Something fun to do, of course, this next one. Lots of responses. Do you have any other thoughts or ideas on how we should address Riverside Park? Just tons of skate park feedback, uh, in this, like, um, it was, if you go through it, you're gonna see skate park, we need a skate park, we need a skate park. Need a place for kids and teens. So that was kind of the background on it. All of this went to Advisor Record Board multiple times for discussion. We then brought in, uh, architecture who did the design for Central Park. And Blake, I said, the lead architect with, uh, architecture, did a roundtable with us and, uh, just, you know, took ideas and suggestions, what we'd like to see in the park. And then he fed all of that into a plan for us. So, um, I'll go to the next one, closer in. So major takeaways, more from kind of top to bottom, was improving the walkway around the Stone Water Pond with basically a crushed limestone path. And, uh, those can be compacted pretty well by using binder, so they can be actually really, really firm. Uh, tree planting there. You can see the shadow of the parking lots right here, and all of that will be removed. And we'd have a turnaround, just a little bit of drop off parking or handicap parking for launches and river access. Matt's suggestion, of course, was we need access into this. If someday we need to do dredging, this, this private property also will be ready away. So there was a couple tweaks that went into the plan to make sure we had that access. Lots of improvements along the riverfront. We'll see some example pictures eventually there as well. Seating areas along the riverfront. Restroom generally stays in the same location because the utilities are already there. And then you can also see the shift in the, the skate park, trying to bring it closer to the front of the park. Uh, and getting rid of a lot of that inverbed surface by the river. We threw, we did add on, I asked Mike to do this, to put that U8 soccer field there. Not necessarily that we would very purposely program that. We probably wouldn't specifically program, just to give you some sort of, give folks a scale there of how much space there is there. We could just hang lines there, people could go kick a ball around and play if they wanted to. I don't see that as necessarily a fixed programming place. Couple tweaks on parking we did was when Blake made the plan, originally we'll shift it up this way, but another good observation by Matt was there's a lot of coming and going from these businesses. So we shifted that down a little bit, and then we added some up here on the end of the street. So this would, yeah, we'd have to figure out how to address drainage for that. But this was ideal, a pretty unanimous decision by Advisor Rec that this would be beneficial for skateboarder and really quick access into the riverwalk. Uh, probably a primary access way into the riverwalk. Uh, playground, we just, we say, uh, here, I'll leave it a little vague, uh, spade and playground. Uh, maybe there's no slide there, for example, right now. But it would be nice to get a few other small pieces in there as well. This is just a closer in version of the top corner of the park. This one, if you're colorblind by themes, you probably have a hard time seeing the shading on this. Uh, but he does put phase one, two, and three because Advisor Rec made suggestions on what we should prioritize. And the number one priority was riverfront, uh, developments. Just getting fishermen kayaking, walking, uh, involved. Then second priority really was restroom access, and then skate park, other type of amenities kind of being a third priority. Pictures. Now, these are just pictures that I'm sure Blake just has a stock full of good pictures from parks. It gives some sort of context. He liked these things, uh, but trying to redo the rest with a good picnic shelter. The top, couple, top corner pictures there. The middle one, the, the number 10, three, these are kind of examples of what overlooked could be with details. He liked this kind of concrete, colored concrete to help you flow, uh, through the park and kind of guide you essentially in like this type of area. Then we do something like that, the seating area, we'll start on like a little plaza on the river.
Are you, you're doing a lot, and it looks like you're, you're not leaving it natural. Are you gonna be moving those rocks and stuff?
There really are no rocks. This is right now.
It was waterfall.
Right now, it's like this. So, or that. Uh, there's probably some riprap type of rocks in here. There's another picture here. Or this, is really what that waterfront looks like. And so if you could imagine three different types of access, and in between could be natural, right? On the map, on this one. So he's showing like an overlooked type of space here. Uh, 11, he's showing, just a riverwalk, and nine would be the kayak launch. And so, yeah, really, there could be two or three different types. But some parks will have like a stepped block kind of down in the water as well. But there's, there's a decent stretch there. So if, if one was kind of a rail overlook, one was a step, and one was a launch, uh, there still should be meaningful gaps hopefully for.
Like we say, kayak launch, obviously be suitable for canoes, but it isn't designed to back a trailer boat. If you cut it into it, this is.
It would not be a ramp, no, no. It would be, uh, yeah. We'd go for some, this is a fully accessible one, uh, which could be canoe or kayak, but it would not be a, like a motorboat back in type of launch.
They just put in a handicap accessible kayak launch over by what, where I wrote was Metz Park.
That, I mean, that's.
How come there's no bar for a person to help get themselves in the kayak, like? Because I, people were asking how they were supposed to use it because it didn't seem functional. And I looked, and most of them have like a bar across the top with straps so that they can get themselves in the kayak.
Yeah, uh, you're talking the one that's been installed since like the last couple weeks?
Yeah.
That one's got a lot of issues, and I'm fighting with the contractor right now to get it fixed.
Okay.
The majority of them do not have a bar. Majority of them have no bar, like this one. Because you want to be able to face either direction. The bar actually prevents you from facing.
Oh, this, they've got like an overhead, like when they, they get off their chair and they go down the steps to get in. They need some way to lift themselves up to get in the kayak, and that's.
Yeah, usually there's like, this one right here, there's a, uh, there's a bar here. But most of them do not put a bar here.
No, I meant like over the top of the kayak.
Oh, we're here.
To get accessible, is what he's saying.
Yeah, they don't do that. This is a fully accessible adaptive launch. There is no lock.
Because like, when I looked up online for handicap accessible ones, they all, all the ones that came up that online showed a bar with some ropes for a person to pull themselves up.
Yeah, and those are like, like, super advanced. The vast majority of them are all like this. They would, they would not do that. Then the concept of the skate park would be to go to more of a concrete, go to a concrete skate park. And the other really cool thing that's becoming popular for skate park. And the other really cool thing that's becoming popular are skate park pump tracks. Um, so like the picture on the left, it's a ribbon, that's like, gives you a little momentum as you go. Uh, so that would be kind of a unique feature of that. Any questions on those pictures or the, the diagram or anything like that?
Like, you touched on this briefly, but do you, do you have a sense of the demographic of the people that are saying, being just in the skate park is important? Are they people that are using it now, or are they people that thought it was only fifteen or twenty years ago that they were, they're youth using it?
Right, uh, they're.
Sometimes we look in the rearview mirror.
That question is up for debate, I guess, that's a valid question. The spread on these are, yeah, millennial age, you know, late twenties, into their thirties, Gen X-ish, forty year olds. Those are all people that are my age, you know? Like, they, they're out of their teen years, probably saying that they, a lot of them said that they skated here when they were teenagers. Now, it was a very resounding response that they all thought we should have a skate park. Um, is there tremendous use right now? Probably not, but it's also not very good shape, and there's no restroom, so, yeah.
What's the demographic of the apartment complex that's, that they've got three, four bedroom units that have a lot of kids?
There's gonna be a lot of kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, this, updating this park, we have hopefully an apartment complex with a lot of families coming in. It is probably important, right?
I think that's pretty accurate. I mean, I used to go to skate parks with my kids and skate into my forties.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I used to drive down into Illinois.
I brought my kids.
Well, yeah, I still have three skateboards in my garage.
I grew up skateboarding, I brought my kids in the skate park.
Yeah.
I see value in it.
So that's the main plan. Now, you've probably seen other plans from me. The Shota Park Master Plan is a very big comprehensive plan. Parks Open Space Plan, you'll get in a few months, hopefully, will be a very big comprehensive plan. This one, small park, honestly didn't spend as much time as we were gonna spend on the Shota. So I did write out just the basic priorities and some funding strategies to summarize a few things in here. Yeah, number one, revitalize that riverfront with access for fishing, paddling, wildlife viewing, walking, other leisure activities. Spend time relaxing. Renovate reopened the park restrooms, add a picnic shelter. Create a concrete skate park with a pump track. Remove impervious surfaces, basically make the native habitat better. Re-locate parking alongside River Place and School Street, improve visibility, make the park feel more welcoming. Improve safety and make the park more welcome with improved lighting, security, and cameras, better sightlines, and then expanding. Funding strategies. We don't, this is probably what we go through and do everything. What's nice about this plan is we have DNR's Coastal Management Grant Program is coming up for grant submission in November. Um, I'll have this plan, and it's still gonna give us prospective cost estimates, so I'll go into that grant season. The plan and cost estimates, it'd be in really good shape, uh, apply for those grants. Now, they're very, very competitive, and they take me a long time to get the money, because I still haven't got money from twenty twenty-three's coastal management grant that we're supposed to get. Uh, so there's some caveats in those things, but it sets us up well to go out for some of the grant pieces. Um, that's coastal management, there's urban rivers, there's lots of waterway type of funding right now in DNR's market.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think there's a grant group in Washington that has some money up to, the time they're getting covered up, past sins.
Yeah, I don't know how far off the river's funded related issue goes. That's.
Well, that's part of the, because it's before.
It's part of the watershed.
Yeah. That's why we, we would qualify for the coastal management programs, it's the ice. Uh, then the other, uh, that's number two, we was talking about coastal management. The other one that's super important is stewardship. So DNR's stewardship program is a bunch of different funding sources. Uh, but stewardship funds from DNR, one of the very few ways that you can apply for like classic park things, ball fields, playground equipment. And, uh, and, like, I don't really know of any other park that don't create opportunities to do classic park recreation things other than stewardship. Now, we did put in a pretty big application for the Shota for this coming year, but in the future, it could be right for stewardship grant dollars as well. And then, of course, fundraising from community organizations and all those good things, individuals probably for a skate park project. Um, and then, of course, our annual borrowing capital costs as well, so. That's about the, the whole of it. Um, if you have any questions, anything you're curious about, I'm happy to answer. ARB gave us a, uh, everybody that was in attendance at Quorum for this. Uh, we had trouble getting everybody there during the summer, but, uh, we had Quorum and everybody voted in favor of that that was there, so.
So the attendees, certainly wouldn't hurt for this to come to City Council to affirm that ARB recommendation and make this an official, less city plan.
So item number two, that building is renovatable?
I don't know, is it? I don't know.
Okay.
Was there any discussion of moving some of those facilities, especially if they have to be rebuilt? To not right on top of the street, but closer proximity to the frontage street, it's fourteen there. To just for that overall feeling of safety and visibility?
We, we could definitely shift it. Blanketax conversation was, I was worried about cost, because I've got plenty of other park projects going. Um, and that, that is right where the.
Yeah, it's plumbed out.
And plus it's in the middle of parks.
It's in the middle.
And it's supposed to be one of the burning ones.
So I think the parking all comes forward, skate park starts to come forward, closer to Fourteenth Street. So you're not so heavy into the back of the park where you can't see where you're parking. Lighting would help a bit, a clear camera would be good, probably, so.
Shouldn't you?
Is there lighting along the riverfront itself, so you can have?
Not right now, although I don't know if it's functional.
That part of the plan for?
I've never been down there at night, uh, but it's part of the plan. Blake was suggesting things like, like accent lighting along the pathways.
Maybe that's one of them too, because you come back in the dark.
Yeah, that they could be quite bright, I mean, we can manage that however we want to.
Great, you know, I have a lot of great things.
Not as bright as the Shota Playground.
You don't want extra lighting illusions, but.
So, there we go.
I know you don't wanna switch it to now, it's remote.
Folks, not people with this coming forward to council next Monday night, and to, I, I guess that term ratifies a really great work by staff in the ARB and the public. That'd be the plan.
I'm okay, I'm all right with it. Oh, you're all right with it, okay, let's hear the question. The only thing, Tim, to Tim's question, the only thing about the kayak, kayak launches is that there are accessible kayak launches, and there are adaptive kayak, kayak launches, they're two different things. So accessible kayak launches is really linked with, is this. If you're saying it's adaptive, you're saying that you aren't meeting like every piece of ADA compliance. An accessible launch doesn't necessarily mean every piece of ADA compliant, but they are very useful.
I wouldn't look at it, it was kind of confusing just looking at it, cause I was in a store and someone started complaining to me about it. So I went, oh, we'll take a look, and it's like, maybe there should be an instruction board on how to use it or something.
Yeah, most of them do, uh, some of them do, uh, if you want an easy dot, you probably, like that one in that picture would probably give you an instruction panel. Uh, the company we went through didn't do that. I'm not happy with that transfer bench, primarily because there is a rail there, it shouldn't be there. Um, uh, because it blocks the use of the transfer bench, actually. Um, and this one has a slide up on the transfer bench. So what you should do is, you should get on the transfer bench, slide out the extension, and then you're kind of over the top of the back of the kayak, so your legs can go down in front of it, so. And I, I've gotten to use these with people, especially with disabilities and things. So these are still very, very functional, if not completely adaptive with ADA.
The one I told her there doesn't have the slide up part, does it?
No, and I was, I was frustrated with that. And I was there with Megan today to take pictures of them going into the kayak, to say why I can like, like with the guy, the contractor.
Yeah, and the other person, you know, this is in the way, because when you go to lower the kayak.
Yeah, it blocks.
Yeah, it blocks.
I, I'm very aware of the issues with that right now.
Man, twelve kids, one that lowers.
I don't know, they might, and, um, they have, I'm sure, I think they have an extension bench like that. If, there are ones that will give you like, hold, like a, like a, like a, you have a seat to sit in, and you're like literally lowered. Like this would be somebody with like extreme cerebral palsy or like paralysis and things like that. The vast majority, like those are, those are fully adaptive, more than, more than what we would, you need serious help to make those things happen. But for our purposes, with training and skills and knowledge, a kayak launch like this can totally do the job.
Would be nice if it was like a QR code, or take you to a video, so.
Yeah.
I'm here, I know how to use it.
They are surprisingly expensive as well. Um, that's probably a sixty thousand dollar launch.
So what you come, like you are going to like.
All right, question, comments, thoughts, good to go?
I was just gonna say, uh, parking.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, should be angle parking, it's easier for a pelvis.
Okay, I will, I will ask people.
And we'll be back.
I definitely wanna. Figure out drainage road issues.
Yeah.
All right, okay, no guests.
That's it for today.
Number eight. Reminder to our annual maintenance of sirens followed by testing.
Two.
Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so annually they've been inspecting our sirens, they have new tend to up that, they have the additional one. Um, there's another question, Brian, I test two, but it's, it's a key side. Um, one of those things that they did say is that in a year, two years, we would have to replace the batteries. We did put in four capital, if you recall, last year, for those batteries. So at the same time, they're looking at, we install those sirens, they are going to replace the batteries as well, and then for, for test, um, it's needed to, 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 something on Facebook.
Okay.
Awesome. Anything else?
That Facebook will also post with water, light, city, everybody, so hopefully somebody sees it and might crash or whatever.
Let's hope you don't hear those sirens while we're at two or three o'clock tomorrow.
We will be down.
Support test.
We're purposely going to wait until after.
We're going to come to this event meeting tomorrow to discuss when we post theirs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, me.
Yeah.
Oh, they just tested it? Okay, I'm all right. Okay, um, lucky for motion to adjourn. Thank you, Tim, second by, thank you, Shannon, discussion. Seeing none, uh, all favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you and good night.